We're going into the Board of Equalization and Review meeting first.
I would like to say that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and that the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not even exist in this document, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review of Halifax County, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your actions as a member of the Board of Equalization and Review to be influenced by personal political friendships or obligations of any kind.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Kirk.
Fortunately, I do not have any appeals to come before you today. I will give you an appeal update. However, we had 66 property tax appeals for the 2025 tax year. We only have of those 11 remaining, six that we are working on, and five that we are awaiting either power of attorney information or supplemental evidence. So at this time, I would ask the board to recess to make a dip, at which time taking the appeals for the 2025 tax year, just knowing that you may have to reconvene periodically if we do have any appeals requested to come before the.
Representative Rodney Pierce, raise your hand. With the North Carolina House, talked with you all earlier this morning. And anyway, thank you all for being here. This time, we're going to go to the invocation, turn our attention toward the invocation. We're going to be led in that by Commissioner Jimmy Silver, and then after that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and Unison. Those of you who wish to join us, please stand.
Yeah, we pray that we're united in our cause and what we're going to do today, Lord, to improve this county. God, we ask you to watch over us, keep us, and let us make this Halifax County a better place for all citizens and let everything be done decent and orderly. In your name, we say amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is as follows: United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand.
Formal recognition by the North Carolina General Assembly under North Carolina General Statute 78-5, Page 15, 1965. Educational contributions: Administration of the Hollowaw Indian School from 1957 to 1969, recognizing as the only non-reservation tribal-supported educational institution in North Carolina. Establishment of the Hollowaw-Sapomee Tribal Tour School in 2000, further solidifying the tribe's dedication to educational advancement. Cultural initiatives: Participation in American Indian Chicago Conference in 1961, aligning with the national power, Red Power Movement, when indigenous rights. Hosted in North Carolina Pioneer and Wild Modern Powwow in 1965, contributing to cultural revitalization efforts. Membership with the National Congress of American Indians in 1969, establishing a strong presence in national advocacy efforts. Leadership and representation: Principal involvement in founding the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs in 1971, led by distinguished leaders such as W. Laura Richardson, Dr. Joseph Oliver Richardson, and Herbert J. Richardson. Election of Glenn A. Richardson to the Warren County Board of Commissioners in 1992, followed by Barry Richardson, performance as chairman. Recent elected officials include Shannora Richardson-Davis and Jimmy Silver to the Halifax County Board of Commissioners, and Al Fugler to the Warren County Board of Commissioners, exemplifying ongoing civic engagement and leadership. Federal and local engagements: Establishment of a nonprofit organization in 1974 to secure programmatic funding and facilitate educational partnership reporting initiatives.
I do believe Leah Brewer may be here, I'm not sure.
She's here.
Okay. And where is Ms. Brewer?
Right there.
Okay, alright, welcome. Thank you for being here. Okay? She's the person that's kind of leading the charge with this. Yeah, Mr. Brewer's gonna read the resolution.
Alright, proclamation honoring dog bite prevention laws. Whereas the American Veterinary Medical Association reports that there are nearly $90 million dollars in the United States, and 4.5 million people are bitten by dogs each year, and whereas children are the most common victims of dog bites and are far more likely to be severely injured, as 45% of homes have at least one dog. And whereas Paul's education began over 15 years ago, an effort to promote a positive impact for this important cause.
... employees, 561 or 2 of them. And they work very hard, they do a great job for Halifax County, and you know, and you just can't take things like that for granted. I remember we had the Christmas party, Christmas gathering for our employees, and public utilities, I think, missed that, because they had to go out and do work that day.
Yeah, sure.
And you all had to do something special for them late on. Let's just let you know how hard they worked. That's just a small piece of this gigantic puzzle. And, um, and not just them, but all of our employees work very hard, and we have some of the hardest working employees around. That's why it behooves this board, and you all know this, that we're gonna look after our employees as best as we can. That's number one priority. And, uh, as far as I'm concerned. I only got one vote, I got the ship, but I got one vote. But, um, anyway, my vote is always gonna be for the employees. So anyway, based on all of that, um, thank, thank those hard-working 507 employees for all that they do. And thank you too, as well as Deef. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move to the next item, um, which is the Lake Gaston Weed Council. And I'm going to defer that to Commissioner Silver, Commissioner Barrett, and any other commissioners who want to speak on behalf of, of that item that you wanted to add it to the agenda. And of course, any of the commissioners can chime in, as well as staff. But any one of y'all can start off, any of the commissioners.
I'll go ahead and start off.
Okay, Commissioner Webb?
I think last meeting, we had approved $75,000 in matching funds, Department of Environmental Quality, we see they sent, we received a $75,000 grant, and we are gonna match that $75,000. Is that correct? Yes. All right. Now, my question is, I guess to the county attorney, do we have the legal authority to provide more funds that would be strictly used to treat hydrola along the Halifax County shoreline?
Commissioner Webb, as I said in my memo to you from last week, if the...
Hold on a second. Can you, Sheriff, can you hear him back there? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, Lord, okay. As I said in my memo to the board last week, if the Lake Gaston Weed Control Council amended its budget to something more than the, I think, $150,000 budget they currently have in their grant agreement with the state DEQ. If they amend that budget and DEQ accepts that budget, then we would have authority to provide more matching funds for that project. It doesn't necessarily mean they have to have more money from the state grant, but the budget has to be in place for us to have a grant agreement that would establish a budget for hydrola control and how the money from the county would be spent.
Okay. Commissioner Webb? That answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Anyone else?
I know...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, previous motion, previous motion for $75,000, I know the association, it's 116 what the other counties are funding, and I'm trying to determine, I've looked at some of the plans, we got some of the, spent discussion about how much shoreline we has, but I've looked at some of the plans, and their treatment is calling for more treatment in actual Halifax County. And I'm just trying to figure out why come we funded it in the past at the full amount? Start working on the plan for next year, and look at fully funding it this year. But if anyone else have an input of... Go ahead, Commissioner Barrett?
Uh, you know, I agree with Mr. Silver, I think, you know, in my opinion of looking at it, the lake is an asset to the county, the hydrola and the algae that's up there now are threats to public property, and eventually to our public water drinking supply. We get all our, almost all the drinking water in Halifax County comes out of Rock Rapids Lake, which is right downstream from Lake Gaston. So I think it's well within the public interest to fund what we have in the past for our part of the Lake Gaston Weed Control.
Now, just to be clear about something, it's been said a couple of times, we have not fully funded it in the past every time. And I know some of you new to the board, but I've been around for a long time. And, um, part of it, you know, we have given 116, I can't remember the exact stats, but I do know that there have been years where we have given Lake Gaston, or approved Lake Gaston, you know, half of that amount. So I just wanted to point that out as a fact.
So I guess going back to, I guess, the Tony Rollins that the Lake Gaston Weed Control Council would have to amend their budget, and that would go back to DEQ, and that would give us the authority to provide additional funding.
That would give you additional authority, authority to provide additional funding for the control of hydrola.
Oh, exactly.
And when once we talk about the lingby, they all want to overlook that we don't have any authority to, to deal with algae in a body of water.
So would it be proper to make a motion to request an additional $46,000, provided however, that the Lake Gaston Council Weed Control amend their budget to the Department of Environmental Quality, strictly for hydrola?
I think that's up to that board. Are you, what you're saying is, would you make a motion to provide additional funding for a budget for control of hydrola under the current MOU between Lake Gaston Weed Control Council and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality? Contingent upon that, I don't, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that motion, there's nothing wrong with that funding, if those contingencies happen. The other thing that you need to be aware of is, as I mentioned in my memo to you, these fund, the funding to these outside agencies, and Lake Gaston Weed Control is among many outside agencies we provide funding to, has to be under a grant agreement that specifies the budget of the program and the work that's being funded, that specifies how it got to be something the county could actually engage in, that's legally authorized to engage in, and specifies what happens if the budget is underspent and there's money left over. If you're looking for help on lingby, I can't help you with that.
That's right.
Tony Webb, was that a motion that you had on... Attorney Webb, was that a motion that you had on before?
Yes.
Okay, repeat, Madam Clerk, can you repeat that motion on? Okay. Commissioner Webb, repeat your motion.
I move that we provide an additional $46,000.
$41,000.
$41,000, no, $46,000. $41,000, I'm sorry. $41,000 to the Lake Gaston Weed Control Council, strictly for hydrola along the Halifax County shoreline. However, upon the contingency that the Lake Gaston Weed Control amend their budget with Department of Environmental Quality, that will allow us to provide the additional funding.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Webb, seconded by Commissioner Silver in a further discussion. And I'm assuming that that information need provided back to Halifax County once it's done, right?
That's standard in all of our grant agreements.
Right, okay. All right. With that being said, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item is public comment. And just before I call folks up for public comment, I do have an opening statement for public comment period. As required by General Statute 153A-52.1, the Halifax County Board of Commissioners provide a public comment period once a month as an item of business on its regular meeting agenda. Now, as scheduled time for public comment period, when I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address I'm again speaking. You will have three minutes to address the board. And I underscore three minutes. And the Madam, can't imagine who's going to keep up with that. When you hear that buzzer go off, your time is ended. If you have documents that you want to give to the board, please hand those out before going to the podium. I will not go over the rules of the public comment period because they were posted by the rule of this room. By signing up to speak, you have acknowledged that you are familiar with the rules and that you will abide by them. We will do our best to hear from everyone who signed up to speak, but if we are unable to accommodate everyone in a time allotted, you'll be invited to speak during our next public comment period in which you'll be given priority without having to sign up again. We appreciate your interest in Halifax County Government, and we look forward to hearing from you. At this time, the first speaker I'm going to invite to speak is Jeff Zimmer.
Good morning.
Commissioners, I'm Jeff Zimmer. I'm the treasurer of the Lake Gaston Weed Control Council. Based upon the motion that was just made, I would have to state that we appreciate the effort by several of you to bring this forward and help-
Monday through Friday from nine to twelve, provided they have the documentation that they need to apply for a program. Residents can also learn and apply about the program at the center or in other areas that we'll have upcoming meetings. We do have a session in Middleton on Wednesday from one to three at the library, so any resident can come and hear about the program and we're available to help them apply on the spot as well. So by establishing this program, residents of Halifax County can significantly improve their energy efficiency of their home, leading to lower utility bills and enhancing their living conditions. But one thing we do want them to know is we are not paying like deals at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Appreciate it. Okay, Kayla Taylor?
She said Wednesday.
Yeah, one to three.
One to three.
Good morning.
Good morning. Greetings, County Commissioners. How y'all doing?
All right. Good.
It's a pleasure to be before you all today, and it seems like an opportune time to bring before you a concern that I've brought before this County Commissioner Board before, and that is the issue to establish a Halifax County Parks and Recreation Department supported
I know she's not an elected official. She's an appointed official, but she's a higher official. And then we have our District Attorney, Kim Scott, here with us. Thank you for being here. And I always have our illustrious sheriff with us. Thank you. And did I overlook an elected official? I see a few attorneys, Jeffrey Davis and, oh yeah, Dr. Richardson. We've recognized you earlier with the tribe. Yep, with the tribe.
Judge Freeman.
Oh, Judge Freeman. Who are you? You sneaked in here. Our Chief District Court Judge, Teresa Raquel Robinson Freeman.
And Attorney Jones, too.
Right. Oh, yeah. I was going to recognize Attorney Frank Jones over there. But also, I saw Mr. Silver's wife, who's on Halifax County School Board. Okay, all right. Yep, Frank Jones, we go way back and a long ways back. Happy to have you as well. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Judge Branch?
Thank you. Good morning. Madam County Manager, Chairman Bryant.
Thank you, Judge Branch. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mister Chairman, honorable members of the board, and to all of our Halifax County citizens, I'm excited to be here today. My name is Kim Gurye Scott, and I come before you as your elected District Attorney for Halifax County, also representing Bertie, Hurford, and North Hampton Counties. As of January 2025, I have been in this position as your elected District Attorney for two years. Since taking office in January of 2023, the total pending cases are down 16% throughout my district. Since taking office, pending felony cases are down 40.8% across the district. Pending District Court Criminal and Infraction Cases are down 9.3%, and pending District Criminal Court Cases are down as well. Notably, pending DWI Cases are down 35.8%. Specifically addressing Halifax County Cases, there has been a total filing increase across the board in Halifax County of criminal cases by 10%. As it relates to felony filings, there has been a felony disposition increase in 48.2% of cases in Halifax County. Felony pending cases decreased the entirety of the number of cases across the board by 36.4%. Unfortunately, as we talk about numbers, we also have to talk about the increases. Total homicide filings in Halifax County has increased by 50%. My team has done an amazing job as it relates to the dispositions. They have increased by 53.8%, but the increase in numbers of filings is traumatic for our county as a whole. I am very proud of the work that my team has done in the courtroom as it relates to these cases. I am more proud and probably more excited about the work that my team continues to do as it relates to the people they encounter. We continue to take a more holistic approach to addressing cases that come before the court. We continue to prioritize the fact that cases that are in jail need to be addressed before other matters. We have worked closely with building relationships with the leadership team in Halifax County, specifically the Sheriff's Office and the jail, in prioritizing those matters, getting the court, in beginning jail courts that we can make sure that those cases that are sensitive need to be heard in a timely manner, but also in triaging our cases in a more efficient manner. And so people aren't sitting and waiting in jail as long as they were before so that their cases can be resolved. And so I'm extremely proud of the efforts that we've made. And one thing that I can tell you that I know I can say for certain, and everyone that comes behind me will tell you, is that our court system is everything but perfect. It is flawed, and it continues to have bumps along the way, but when we work together, it absolutely works. And that is proof and shown in the numbers where we continue to be more efficient with our court time, more efficient in the disposition of cases that present themselves to the District Attorney's Office, more efficient in our communications and building relationships with the people that sit around the table to make things happen. Because at the end of the day, we are one office and we are one cog in the wheel. Working alone doesn't get it done, and so I'm extremely proud of the team that is here today with me, representing Halifax County Superior and District Courts, because we've come together and we've made a difference in Halifax County Superior and District Courts, and I'm extremely proud of that. Thank you for having us today.
All right.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Tanya Ruffin, and I'm honored to serve as the first Chief Public Defender for District Seven, which includes Bertie, Halifax, North Hampton, and North Hampton Counties. I was sworn in as Chief Public Defender on January 1, 2024, and by June of 2024, the Public Defender's Office began taking cases, marking a further step in the right direction for access to justice in our district. Public Defender's Offices exist to ensure that people who cannot afford an attorney still receive high-quality legal representation when facing criminal charges. Our work is essential to upholding the constitutional right to counsel and promoting fairness in the justice system. In many parts of the state, particularly in rural areas, there are simply not enough attorneys available to take on these critical cases. These areas are often referred to as legal deserts because of the severe shortage of accessible legal services. District Seven is considered a legal desert. Our mission in the District Seven Public Defender's Office is simple: to deliver client-centered zealous advocacy with compassion. This means approaching each case with empathy, respecting the humanity of every client, and providing a strong, dedicated defense. We take the time to understand our clients' stories, circumstances, and needs, and we work tirelessly to protect their rights and ensure their voices are heard in the courtroom. We also embrace a collaborative approach to defense that looks beyond the courtroom. We understand that many of our clients face challenges that contribute to their involvement in the criminal justice system. That's why we work to connect them with local resources such as mental health care, substance treatment, housing support, and employment services that can help to address some of those underlying issues. By partnering with community providers and focusing on long-term stability, we aim not only to defend cases but also to reduce recidivism and support meaningful lasting change in our clients' lives and in the community. Right now, the Public Defender's Office has 10 of our 12 attorney positions filled, and we're supported by a strong team that includes three legal assistants, one administrative assistant, an investigator, and a mitigation specialist slash social worker. It's a dedicated group of professionals who bring different strengths to the table, and together, we're working hard to build a solid foundation for the office, one that values teamwork, service, and integrity. In addition to representing people, we hope to play a role in restoring trust in the justice system and giving our community the fair and effective representation it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Bryant.
Good morning.
And members of this board, Madam Clerk, Madam County Manager, and others. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Teresa Raquel Robinson Freeman, and I serve as your Chief District Court Judge for Judicial District Seven, which does encompass Halifax, North Hampton, Hurford, and Bertie Counties. Now, I want to check my time first because I want to make sure I don't go over by my count. I have about three or four minutes left. I'm good. I'm going to intentionally bring up the rear of this presentation because I believe I have some exciting news. And I was glad to hear when I sat here beside our local media that he has heard, and the word is out, that we have some exciting news coming to our Judicial District Seven, which of course, again, includes Halifax County. We are up to implement E-Coords. And if you have not heard that, you will hear it, trust me. First of all, let me explain that when you hear the word E-Coords, you will also hear some other words that are interchangeable with that word. So if you hear people talking about Odyssey, or Enterprise Justice, or E-Coords, or ICMS, any of those things, we're all talking about the same thing, and that is the complete overhaul of our court system to go paperless. If any of you have ever had to come to court, either for yourself, or for a family member, or you were just there with a friend, and you know that through the years, we have had something called SHUCs, those are paper files, that every file, that's everything that's ever filed with the court system goes into a SHUC or a file. Well, effective April 28th and going forward, the process will officially begin where we are going to go paperless. Now, I know some of you know that, or are asking, why is she excited about that? That sounds overwhelming. It is. It is very much overwhelming. So if I look like I'm tired and I have bags under my eyes, that's why, because we have been at this and meeting with Administrative Office of the Courts officials since November of 2024, having weekly meetings to try to prepare for this moment. You should know that there are seven other tracks that have gone before us in the state of North Carolina, so we are not the first, and we are going to be successful as the other tracks have been. We are track eight, and we will go live on April 28th, along with Nash, Edgecombe, Wilson, Pitt, and some other counties as well. Now, what does that mean for our citizens? And I want to make very clear about, hit on a key point. There are many things I could speak about, but I want to hit on just some key points as to how that affects our citizens. First and foremost, I want everybody to know that the lion's share of the work that has to be done in order to go paperless falls upon our clerks and judicial support staff. They are currently and have been handling the stress of all of this for many months, and they will continue to do so for several months after we go live on April 28th. If you're asking, well, I thought April 28th, it was all said and done, why is there more stress after that? Because I need everyone to understand that in going paperless, that means every single file that has ever been filed in the courthouse, so many, many years, even before I was born, will at some point have to be scanned into our Odyssey system. That means, effective April 28th, if you have to come to court, you can't just add on a case. Traditionally, people have been able to, and we have been very lenient with people just popping in if they missed a court date, or just needed to add on a matter to resolve it once, years later even. We have been very lenient with just saying, go down to the court's office, get the file pulled, add it on, we'll handle it. There will be no more of that for a very long time, because we can't just add on a case and cure it. That case has to have already been scanned into the system, the entire file, because effective on that date as well, judges can no longer use an EPN to sign orders. And so I joke all the time that I'm getting ready to throw away all of our EPNs out of our file cabinets so that I won't forget and be in violation of the law. Effective on that date, every single order that the judge will sign will be signed electronically. So, that means that for at least the next three months and continuing for as long as it takes our stakeholders to become comfortable with the new system, there will be mandatory calendar limits. How does that affect you? Well, if you've ever been down to the courthouse, you know that we have sometimes hundreds, especially on our admin court days, traffic court, hundreds of people scheduled, 300, 400, 500 people, especially in Halifax County. That will be no more for a very good while, because with the new system, until everybody becomes comfortable, we have to impose these mandatory calendar limits so that we can get through all of the calendar cases within a single day. So that will create a backlog. So if you hear that we are getting ready to go into a backlog, don't be surprised, don't be alarmed. We are not. Do we like it? No, of course we don't. The last backlog we went into was during COVID, and we're getting ready to go into another one. It is inevitable because of the calendar limits that we're having to face and because all of the new systems that we're having to learn. Thankfully to this board, you have already met some of our courtroom needs. We will now need, instead of one clerk in the courtroom at all times, for most of our courts, we will need two clerks in order to handle the business sitting side by side. And so I do want to again thank you, Madam County Manager and others who have addressed those needs, because now we do have better spacing to sit two courts, two courts in court. I know that you've also addressed the plugs, the electric plugs, because everyone who comes in will be on a computer system, a laptop of some kind. We are going to come back and ask you for bigger tables, though, because all of the equipment that has to go on the tables in order to effectively run courts under E-Coords requires an enormous amount of equipment, and our lawyers still need to be able to lawyer and do their jobs without all this equipment in their way. So again, thank you for the help that you provided with the courtroom needs so far. Finally, I just want to end by saying, this is a good day, although it's an overwhelming process that we are undergoing. I want you to be clear that if you have business, citizens, if you have business with the courts anytime on April 28th and thereafter, it will not be business as usual. If you want more information, I encourage all of you to write down this website. It is nccourts.gov/ecourts. Again, n-c-courts, an S, dot gov slash ecourts. Or if you come to any of our courthouses throughout our judicial districts, specifically Halifax County, there are posters everywhere with information and QR codes that you can scan to get more information such that you don't come to the courthouse and be operating in the blind about our new processes. Currently, even now, leading up to April 28th, I want you to know things still look a little differently. For the last two weeks, we have been undergoing practice courts and training sessions with the Administrative Office of the Courts and their business analysis team, and we will continue to do that up and through April 28th. We also will have guests on site throughout the
And providing a strong, dedicated defense. We take the time to understand our clients' stories, circumstances and needs, and we work tirelessly to protect their rights and ensure their voices are heard in the courtroom. We also embrace a collaborative approach to defense that looks beyond the courtroom. We understand that many of our clients face challenges that contribute to their involvement in the criminal justice system. That's why we work to connect them with local resources such as mental health care, substance treatment, housing support, and employment services that can help to address some of those underlying issues. By partnering with community providers and focusing on long-term stability, we aim not only to defend cases but also to reduce recidivism and support meaningful lasting change in our clients' lives and in the community. Right now, the Public Defender's Office has ten of our twelve attorney positions filled, and we're supported by a strong team that includes three legal assistants, one administrative assistant, an investigator, and a mitigation specialist slash social worker. It's a dedicated group of professionals who bring different strengths to the table, and together, we're working hard to build a solid foundation for the office, one that values teamwork, service, and integrity. In addition to representing people, we hope to play a role in restoring trust in the justice system and giving our community the fair and effective representation it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Bryant.
Good morning.
And members of this board, Madam Clerk, Madam County Manager, and others. Good morning.
Morning, gentlemen.
I am Teresa Raquel Robinson Freeman. And I serve as your Chief District Court Judge for Judicial District Seven, which does encompass Halifax, North Hampton, Perford, and Bertie Counties. Now, I want to check my time first because I want to make sure I don't go over. By my count, I have about three or four minutes left. I'm good. I am going to intentionally bring up the rear of this presentation because I believe I have some exciting news. And I was glad to hear when I sat here beside our local media that he has heard and the word is out that we have some exciting news coming to our Judicial District Seven, which of course, again, includes Halifax County. We are up to implement E-Coords. And if you have not heard that, you will hear it. Trust me. First of all, let me explain that when you hear the word "E-Coords", you will also hear some other words that are interchangeable with that word. So if you hear people talking about Odyssey, or Enterprise Justice, or E-Coords, or ICMS, any of those things, that we're all talking about the same thing. And that is the complete overhaul of our court system to go paperless. If any of you have ever had to come to court either for yourself or for a family member, or you were just there with a friend, and you know that through the years, we have had something called "shucks", those are paper files. That every file, that's everything that's ever filed with the court system goes into a "shuck" or a "file". Well, effective April twenty-eighth and going forward, the process will officially begin where we are going to go paperless. Now, I know some of you know that, or asking, "Why is she excited about that? That sounds overwhelming." It is. It is very much overwhelming. So if I look like I'm tired and I have bags under my eyes, that's why. Because we have been at this and meeting with Administrative Office of the Courts officials since November of 2024, having weekly meetings to try to prepare for this moment. You should know that there are seven other tracks that have gone before us in the state of North Carolina. So we are not the first, and we are going to be successful as the other tracks have been. We are Track Eight, and we will go live on April twenty-eighth along with Nash, Edgecombe, Wilson, Pitt, and some other counties as well. Now, what does that mean for our citizens? And I want to make very clear about, hit on a key point. There are many things I could speak about, but I want to hit on just some key points as to how that affects our citizens. First and foremost, I want everybody to know that the lion's share of the work that has to be done in order to go paperless falls upon our clerks and judicial support staff. They are currently and have been handling the stress of all of this for many months, and they will continue to do so for several months after we go live on April twenty-eighth. If you're asking, "Well, I thought April twenty-eighth, it was all said and done. Why is there more stress after that?" Because I need everyone to understand that in going paperless, that means every single file that has ever been filed in the courthouse, so many, many years, even before I was born, will at some point have to be scanned into our Odyssey system. That means, effective April twenty-eighth, if you have to come to court, you can't just add on a case. Traditionally, people have been able to, and we have been very lenient with people just popping in if they missed a court date or just needed to add on a matter to resolve it once, years later even. We have been very lenient with just saying, "Go down to the clerk's office, get the file pulled, add it on, we'll handle it." There will be no more of that for a very long time because we can't just add on a case and cure it. That case has to have already been scanned into the system, the entire file, because effective on that date as well, judges can no longer use an EPN to sign orders. And so I joke all the time that I'm getting ready to throw away all of our EPNs out of our file cabinets so that I won't forget and be in violation of the law. Effective on that date, every single order that the judge will sign will be signed electronically. So, that means that for at least the next three months and continuing for as long as it takes our stakeholders to become comfortable with the new system, there will be mandatory calendar limits. How does that affect you? Well, if you've ever been down to the courthouse, you know that we have sometimes hundreds, especially on our admin court days, traffic court, hundreds of people scheduled, three, four, five hundred, five hundred people, especially in Halifax County. That will be no more for a very good while because with the new system, until everybody becomes comfortable, we have to impose these mandatory calendar limits so that we can get through all of the calendar cases within a single day. So that will create a backlog. So if you hear that we are getting ready to go into a backlog, don't be surprised, don't be alarmed. We are not. Do we like it? No, of course we don't. The last backlog we went into was during COVID, and we're getting ready to go into another one. It is inevitable because of the calendar limits that we're having to face and because of all of the new systems that we're having to learn. Thankfully, to this board, you have already met some of our courtroom needs. We will now need, instead of one clerk in the courtroom at all times, for most of our courts, we will need two clerks in order to handle the business sitting side by side. And so I do want to again thank you, Madam County Manager, and others who have addressed those needs because now we do have better spacing to sit two courts, two courts in court. I know that you've also addressed the plugs, the electric plugs, because everyone who comes in will be on a computer system, a laptop of some kind. We are going to come back and ask you for bigger tables though because all of the equipment that has to go on the tables in order to effectively run courts under E-Coords requires an enormous amount of equipment, and our lawyers still need to be able to lawyer and do their jobs without all this equipment in their way. So again, thank you for the help that you provided with the courtroom needs so far. Finally, I just want to end by saying, this is a good day. Although it's an overwhelming process that we are undergoing, I want you to be clear that if you have business, citizens, if you have business with the courts anytime on April twenty-eighth and thereafter, it will not be business as usual. If you want more information, I implore all of you to write down this website. It is nccourts.gov/ecourts. Again, n-c-courts, an S, dot gov/ecourts. Or if you come to any of our courthouses throughout our judicial district, specifically Halifax County, there are posters everywhere with information and QR codes that you can scan to get more information such that you don't come to the courthouse and be operating in the blind about our new processes. Currently, even now, leading up to April twenty-eighth, I want you to know things still look a little differently. For the last two weeks, we have been undergoing practice courts and training sessions with the Administrative Office of the Courts and their business analysis team. And we will continue to do that up and through April twenty-eighth. We also will have guests on site throughout the month of May. So Administrative Office of the Courts will be in court, will have guests on site throughout our district, including Halifax County, holding our hands and walking us through this system so that we can try our best to be able to navigate it. And once they're gone, probably June first, we will be on our own. So I implore all of you to learn about E-Coords so that you're not blindsided by it and just know that once it's implemented, once we're up and running and everybody's comfortable with our system, it will be a better day for our county because everyone will be able to, including just citizens, not whether you have business before the courts or not, citizens will be able to access information on what's called "portal" of our E-Coord system. So it will be better for everyone in the long run. At this point, is it proper to entertain any questions before I take my seat? Keep half of us, Judge Freeman.
Okay, Commissioner, y'all have any questions at this point? Okay, I know time is winding down, but okay, we're here. Thank you, Judge Freeman. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
This is just like what Judge Branch does. So coming on this show, we met with this team. We formed a team, really. We said what we wanted to do and what we wanted to get done. Sometimes when you're slacking off in the back not doing what you're supposed to speak, Judge Branch will call you, but that's what her team does. We have meetings on top of meetings on top of meetings trying to get this train on track. And one of the problems that we addressed in jail, and this is our jail administrator, Matt Brown, we had people sitting in jail with charges longer than if they would have been found guilty of those charges, and they're still in jail and have not sent over to court. The first time it came to our attention, I was actually walking through the jail and one of the people, and I'm gonna tell you, the folks in jail, they'll tell you they're charged with trespassing, and they're charged with trespassing and murder, and they want to know why they're still in jail. But they only tell you that they're charged with trespassing. Well, I had somebody tell me that they were charged with second-degree trespassing, and they've been in jail since October, and at that point, it was probably eight months. And I was like, "Well, you have to be charged more. Let me go and look up your charges and then say..." Yes, I'm gonna look up your charges. Sure enough, it was just second-degree trespassing. They should not, based on how long they would have gotten, if they were found guilty, still being in our jail, but they have not gone through court process yet. So I reached out to the DA's office instantly. Madam DA, well, it was the next day, got that case in front of her ADAs the next day, and their court date was still another month away. We were able to work with that person and get them out of our jail for their charges. We then assigned Matt Brown, his team, his son, the judge, to need to go around to all of our inmates that were in our jail and ask them, "Who wants to go to court and plead guilty for their charges, or who has been in here for an extended amount of time when they would not have gotten that amount of time for their charges?" So we met with the DA's office with it, the DA assigned an ADA to address those charges, and we were able to filter those people in and out of that stuff and then out of the jail. One thing we realized is when an inmate goes to court and they're given an attorney, they were given a slip, a paper with their attorney's name and contact information and everything else on it. We thought, I think everybody thought, that that attorney gets that information from the inmate. Well, come to find out, the attorney never knew that he or she was that person's attorney. So they're sitting in jail with an attorney, Matt Brown, I'm gonna say Matt Brown. Matt doesn't know he's their attorney. They think that Matt knows, and Matt never comes to see him. So they sit in jail. We found that out. So one thing we've done to mitigate it, Matt came up with a system to where he emails all of the attorneys every day with the name of the people that's in jail and their clients so they will know who's in jail and who they're assigned to so they can come down and speak to us. We opened up a system where attorneys have 24/7 access to their clients that are in our jail. We also implemented a web-based system to where they can web in and talk to their client. We also, we have tablets in our jail now. We started last January, we have tablets. Yes, they can play games on them. People say, "Oh, you give them tablets so they can play games." No, they can do anger management classes, they can do parenting classes, they can take GED classes. They can do a whole lot of things with these tablets. One thing we reached out to this company for was every Sunday, each inmate gets fifteen minutes of free time to make calls with these tablets because you can make calls on them. Because the problem was, they were asking our jail staff to go and call their attorney. And then our jail staff would have to stop doing what they're doing to go and call an attorney. And when you have 150 inmates in the jail, as soon as one asks you to go turn, call your attorney, the other's gonna ask you to go turn. As sooner or later, you're not doing what the county's paying you to do. So we worked with the tablet company to give each inmate fifteen free minutes every Sunday. Now, they can call their attorney, they can call their girlfriend, they can call their mom, they can call their boss, and they can call whoever they want to call. But we're no longer calling their attorney, so we've worked with them to get them that free time to make sure they can reach out to their attorney and let their attorneys too know, "Hey, I need to come see you. I want to plead guilty. I want to do whatever." Any of their attorney can come down. So we're working with our court system, our DA's, and clerks. And I'm gonna tell you, they're like family. They're agitators sometimes. They are agitators sometimes with everything that's going on. But the system is working, we're going in the right direction. We're working out the kinks and everything, jumping up, you know, through the hoops, but we're getting there. So just bear with us. And now we have this E-Coord thing that everybody's gonna have to deal with. But this is just part of the process. So just bear with us when we're gonna get there. And I'll leave it. I don't know if I'll have any time, but Matt may want to say something.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now, we're coming to you. Usually, the jail's begging for things from the county and stuff, but this is one positive thing that we have implemented with this team. We were talking about numbers earlier. The thing that sticks out to me when we started this jail court is, in November, you know, our jail capacity, we can only hold eighty-five inmates, roughly eighty-five. In November, we were double that capacity. We had 180 inmates inside our facility. When we started this jail court, I think the first one was at the end of November, twenty-two of those inmates have been released. And what it has done is it's opened up a line of communication. The attorneys are communicating more with the inmates. They're seeing the inmates, and the inmates are seeing their attorneys. Because it creates a burden on me and my staff when they don't see attorneys because everything is the jail's fault, pretty much the fault. But it has improved so much over the last four or five months that it should leave a lot of tension, a lot of stress on us. As of this morning, I had ninety-eight inmates in jail, which is a drastic improvement from 180 in November. A lot of it is due to commissioners and county management has helped me and shared with some issues, but a big part is on these folks over here that have been working with us. I don't think we've had a stronger relationship with the county itself and the judicial system when it comes to the jail and what we need. So I greatly appreciate everybody and what they've done to help us out because they may be inmates, but they're still human beings, still somebody's son, daughter, mom, dad. And that's how they should be treated, and they should be treated like any other citizen. And if court date's there, they should go to court. And that's what this team has implemented, and it's what we're striving for. So thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Bring it up the rear.
I'm the bottom of this. The defense attorneys were always the wax, as far as lay defense. I didn't really have that much, I didn't have anything prepared coming before.
Just so you all know, this is Jeffrey Davis, attorney.
Yeah, Jeffrey Davis. I'm a defense attorney here in Halifax County, have been for sixteen, seventeen years. I was asked to participate in this group by your local judges, and I wanted to be here today to show my support both for Judge Branch, Judge Freeman, and for our elected DA. I know that our role as defense attorneys, and Mr. Webb is also in this group with me, and Mr. Jones, I know that our roles as defense attorneys are usually adversarial in a lot of ways to some of the other posts that you may have heard from. But everyone who comes to court and has contacted the court system, I think, has an expectation that that court system is going to respond to their needs. And that's whether they are, and to give them an opportunity to be heard, that's whether they are the alleged victim of a crime or whether, on the other hand, they are defendant theory, defendant charging the crime, whether that's a speeding ticket or whether that's something much more serious. I'm so glad that you were able to hear too from the sheriff and Matt Brown because what they are getting up here and saying, again, I've been practicing here for sixteen, seventeen years, and our jail works better today than it ever has. Than it ever had in the area. Thanks in large part to those two gentlemen that just spoke. And so I'm so glad that they were here, that you could hear from them because just the modernization of the way that they have done things over the past couple of months has been fantastic. Judge Branch did say to me when we were sitting there, she asked me, bringing to the county commissioners' attention, that one of the ways that we have been able to reduce the amount of time that is spent in court and kind of reduce the burdens on jail staff is we have video appearance software in our courtrooms. We use that in our district courts. We currently do not have that capability yet in the superior courtroom. And so I think there may be in the future, it may be something where court personnel come to court, the commissioner's proposal, as far as extending that system. And the goal being to try to cut down on all the traffic back and forth between the jail and the and the courtrooms because, of course, you can't just, when you transport somebody from the jail to the courtroom, it does take personnel, it does take time. Whereas if you could use the video appearance for some things, it does cut that down. You know, I compare the court system a lot of times to a tub that's constantly filling with water, and the drain may be taking some of that water out, but you gotta have folks in the tub baiting the water out too, to try to help manage that and try to help control that load, especially when you do have more coming in. The E-Coord system is going to add to that load, I think at least in the short term. I do think that it's probably a good thing in the long run. I'm kind of old-fashioned. I would prefer to keep using paper and keep doing what I know works. But the fact of the matter is, there's going to be a real benefit to the public. There's going to be a real benefit to your local media as far as being able to access documents, not have to get in the car and come down here to Halifax and actually have the clerk's office pull this profile. You're going to be able to see pretty much everything that you could see in a court file online from the comfort of your own home without, or your office, without, I think, even having to sign up for an account. Basically, the public access, if somebody had physically came down here to the clerk's office and looked at that file, is going to be the same thing that they can do in the comfort of their own home. I'll just finish up by saying, there's been a lot of work done over the past year, two years, since COVID, to work down the backlog. I mean, you've heard the numbers from District Attorney Scott. Halifax County is in a much better place than we have been for many, many years. We've worked through a lot of cases. I mean, I've had cases that we've been able to resolve that were sometimes eight, 10 years old. And I know that's scary. That's not every case is like that, but that's, we've worked down a lot of the stuff that was just kind of back there in the back. And that's thanks completely to the individuals that have already appeared in front of you and to the work of the Halifax County Defense Bar too. Again, thank you for allowing us to speak and giving us this time. And I think we're working and I think we're making a lot of progress.
Thank you, Jeffrey. You know, I do thank you all. What's the last one, Judge Branch?
Yes, sir. I want to thank you. And if there are questions, if you want, Judge Freeman's here. We would love for you to talk more about E-Coords. That's gonna be the most prevalent issue we have right now.
Right.
But she is prepared to come back for another meeting if you'd like.
Yeah.
If you would like to prepare your question and have them ready for her or any member of the team.
Okay.
So we thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you all being here. But look, just while we got, and I've talked to the county manager, while we got a captive audience here, we got our illustrious district attorney and chief judge and chief public defender, some attorneys, and also Jeffrey Davis is also the city attorney for Rock Rapids too, and our resident Superior Court Judge Attorney. We got two attorneys on this board of county commissioners, Turner Redden and Attorney.
Attorney Webb is part of our team.
Right. But anyway, I've asked the county manager to speak to, this was on her report, but I asked her to move it up, talk about the renovations that are going on at the courthouse. You know, that $8.2 million that North Carolina General Assembly had given us. And then, you know, also, we're gonna have to add some money to it, the county is, in order to complete the project. So she's gonna talk about that now, and then after she finishes, we're gonna take a break. But we're gonna hear from our county manager at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning to everyone. What a crowd. I'm so glad to see the court staff here and that I'm able to do this report while you're still here. I was gonna make this report to the commissioners under my normal report, but thank you for allowing me to move it up. I'll say, this is the most collaborative group I've ever worked with as far as, we call you the folks down the street, and y'all probably call us the folks up the street. I would be remiss if I did not point out the effort of our IT staff and our operations staff who are there. And if Stephen's hiding, he can come out and say hello. He was hiding back there. He might be gone. They're the ones down there making sure your stuff works every day. And IT, I know, has worked a lot with the clerk's office, getting ready for E-Coords. I feel your pain. I know what DSS went through when they were getting ready for NC fast and NC tracks, and it feels similar. So prayers with y'all. Most of you know we have a courthouse down the street, and it has three floors. And only two of them are operational. When this courthouse was built back in the eighties, I believe, at the time, I think budget constraints eliminated the ability to outfit the third floor. And just to give you a big picture, each floor is 18,000 square feet. So you've got 18,000 square feet of unused space. It's wasted space. And if you're familiar with the first two floors, you know that it is packed with office staff. You've also heard, especially the DA's office and Public Defender talk this morning, they've had to add staff in order to address the backlogs that we've had. They're sitting on top of each other, and they have been for years. And now that you're adding more staff, you have even less space. We've been able to move the tax department up here to the former Chuyus Building, which has alleviated a little bit. But we still have a need for space. And so with the help of the North Carolina General Assembly, particularly at the time Representative Ray, we were given two grants. One was $450,000 for planning to outfit the third floor, and the second one was $8.25 million for construction. So we've been working with that. We've had meetings with all the folks that have offices down there. And we've also employed the services of a construction manager at Risk Firm. And I've told you all this, we've done this because the building is currently occupied. We don't want to disrupt court matters. There will be a lot of work done at night and on weekends so as to do as little disruption as possible to the work going on down there. Plus, you're moving inmates. And so that always creates more complicated of a project. So we've been working with our architects for the better part of a year, and I came in, their initial estimates were over budget. You all know that. We've had to go to Plan B and now Plan C. So my update to you all today was, I essentially have $8.7 million to work with. The primary goal was to outfit the third floor. We will still do that. We still will move the DA's office to the third floor, the judges to the third floor. We're adding two stairwells and an additional elevator shaft. What we're not able to do is outfit an additional courtroom on the third floor. That is because when you do that, there are building code regulations that will require us to sprinkle the entire building at that time. The sprinkler system alone was over a million dollars. And so due to budget constraints, we've had to work with them to remove the courtroom. That reduces the occupancy of people on that floor to just office space. So we have to remove that, at least at this point, until I get additional funding. It will add storage, Madam DA. It will allow for storage. At the moment, we've had a lot of conversations about that, being able to... We've had a lot of conversations about that, being able to accommodate the needs of the files that you do have to keep, even though I know you're scanning. We are doing that too at the county level, but paper is a lot. There's a lot of paper. The good news is, with our latest cost estimates, we still came in a little bit over budget, but the good news is, interest is doing very well. And so thank you to the finance department for taking good care of our funds. We have earned on this project alone, this pot of money, over $262,000 in interest, which should cover the balance of what I need. What I was prepared to ask you for today was for some funding out of the capital reserve fund to cover the balance, if it comes to that, we still have to bid it. I don't think I'll need that now, but you will also hear later, I don't want to steal anybody's funder, but that is also earning interest at a very impressive rate. And so those things are all working to our benefit. That is what I have for you as an update, just for that project at this point. I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a break. So look at that clock up there, and everyone, please be back in your places at 11:25. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me this morning or this afternoon now. I'm just gonna kind of give you an update on what's been going on this past year and answering the questions you might have. Just as a reminder, we don't provide direct services. We assist people in connecting to services, to car-traded providers out in the community. And any of our members can find the providers by calling us or checking our webpage. You've got a provider directory right online. So as you all know, we have grown and grown and grown. We now cover forty-six counties in North Carolina. That was over our last consolidation last February. We are the largest of the four Taylor plans in North Carolina in terms of counties, but not in terms of population. But we do serve the most counties in the state. There are about three million people within these forty-six counties. Between fifty and eighty thousand members who are on the Taylor plan, that number does fluctuate. About one hundred and sixty-three people who have Medicaid Direct. And just under three hundred thousand who have no health insurance. So as we have grown, one thing we have really wanted to make sure that we keep a local presence. We don't want you to feel like you're one of forty-six. We want you to know that you know Halifax, and we try to do that even in our regional structure. When you all first joined us in two thousand and twenty-one, we had three regions. You know, with this last addition of counties, we have now done five different regions. And so Halifax remains in our northern region, which runs from Warren County to Curritown. So really, the county is along the top border. We go down into Martin. Each of these regions has a regional advisory board. Each region has a consumer and family advisory committee. Our governing board is made up of one person from each regional board and one C fact member from each board. We have five regional vice presidents. We have community liaison staff who are out in the community. And then we really try hard to allow active stakeholder engagement to be present, to be at meetings, to be at health fairs, just to really be available to help provide education and support. So for our board, we have Commissioner Richardson Davis as your county commissioner appointee. And then Dr. Regina Dickens is your non-commissioner appointee to our regional advisory board. For our Consumer and Family Advisory Council, Halifax is very well represented. These are individuals who either have lived experience or they're family members of someone with lived experience. And not only do they serve on our regional board, they're also on our governing board. The chair is actually a Halifax county person for our Consumer and Family Advisory Council. I'm the regional vice president, Terrell Austin. He is a community engagement and empowerment person. You probably even see him around. And then I apologize for the typo. Annette Daughery is our community liaison coordinator. A lot of you have probably seen her or met her, and she is a Halifax resident as well. She specifically works in like Warren, Nash, Halifax, and Northampton. For people who have received services, usually we do a whole list a year. But as you know, in July of two thousand and twenty-four, the Taylor plan went live. So we decided to pull some data specifically from that six-month period. So in that six-month period, eighty thousand people received services. Those are individuals who have more severe behavioral health needs, substance use disorders, and developmental disability. And that is the breakdown of that. It's about sixty-three percent mental health, seventy percent substance use, and twenty for developmental disability and traumatic brain injury. That comes to just over eight hundred million dollars in healthcare. Just an update on the Taylor plan. We launched that July first of two thousand and twenty-four. That was several years coming forward. It actually happened this last July. What that means is we operate as a public health team. So we are essentially like just a typical health plan, but we are also a public agency. We're public and we're local to your communities. What that means for us is we help people access behavioral health, but also physical health, pharmacy benefits, hospital stays, all those different things. It's beyond just behavioral health now. That's for people who follow the Taylor plan. Those are individuals who have the highest level of need. Most individuals with Medicaid in your community are served on one of these standard plans. And these are the insurance companies that manage Medicaid. And it's a pretty big difference. So between seven and nine percent of the population that's on the Taylor plan, about twenty-eight percent is going to fit on Medicaid Direct. Everybody else is going to be covered by one of these insurance companies managing Medicaid now. This is just kind of the timeline of that. The standard plans went live in July first of two thousand and twenty-one. We went live in July two thousand and twenty-four. The last phase from that is going to be the foster care plan. That was actually supposed to go live in December, but it's been delayed. It will most likely be this December. And what that means is for children who are in foster care and some of their family members, their Medicaid services will be managed now by Blue Cross. So right now, if DSS gets custody of a child who needs some services, they'll reach out to us. After this rolls out, Blue Cross will be managing their care. When we're talking about the numbers, this is on forty-six. Let me show you Halifax specifically. So in Halifax, nine percent of your Medicaid population falls under us. It's about eighteen hundred people in your county. For Medicaid Direct, it's a little over about fifty-five hundred. And about half of them are eligible for behavioral healthcare services. Everyone else in there can be managed by the insurance companies. When we first entered consolidation, we did town halls. And you all went through that when we first came into Halifax in two thousand and twenty-one. But when we're doing these eighteen town halls, what we realized is we haven't done it in other counties in a really long time. So we're going to start rolling that process out. Probably within the next year, we'll be reaching out about doing a town hall here in Halifax. Just a couple of updates on a few projects. I'll hit on the reentry simulation. That's something we did here in Halifax last summer. It was extremely successful. Halifax showed up. It was the largest one we had up to that point. And I feel like it was really successful. A lot of people learned a lot on what is it like coming back into society after incarceration. People who received services through us in Halifax, it was just under two thousand people. About fifteen hundred were mental health, two hundred and seventy-six were substance use, about four hundred for developmental disability. And that's just information on how you can reach us, how members can contact us. If they contact us, we have the member line, we have the behavioral health crisis line. We also now have a pharmacy line and a nurse line. And so all of our members get that information on their Medicaid card. And that's it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Prepared information, okay, coming from Ms. Low, Commissioner Redden.
I just wanted to share that I participated in the reentry simulation at Halifax Community College. And it was very insightful to help all of us, including instructors and community members, understand some of the challenges that include transportation, paying child support, going to see the admissions office at HCC to be enrolled in school that some people experience. I have a student right now who is formerly incarcerated. And I kept trying to get him to participate. And he finally admitted, he said, "I've really never been called on before in a class." And he's also been struggling with turning in assignments on time. So we got him a planner. So I'm hoping that will help. So thank you all for giving me those tips that I'm now using in the classroom.
Thank you for being willing to receive that because everybody is not always safe.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Commissioner Davis?
... an invitation on April the twenty-sixth. In Halifax, we will have a town hall. Healthcare would like to see you. But I will get back with you.
Just reach out to...
Okay, let's fill the aisle.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else?
I just got one question.
Commissioner Silver?
Substance abuse prevention in school. Is that active in Halifax County?
So I have talked to all three sisters. I've met the two of them. I'm hoping to get that moving as soon as we can. We're working to bring the post center into the school systems to do some help education around topics like vaping, the synthetic THC, because that is a key danger, as well as topics like alcohol and substance abuse, anything like that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? If not, I do need a motion just to accept Truance Health Resources' annual report. Motion by Commissioner Silver. Second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. And a further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks again. Appreciate you. Okay. All right. Now, these ladies have been patient to wait. We have Nidia Scott Davah.
Nidia Sash Davah.
Okay, all right. I knew I was gonna mess it up. And then we also have Emma Oregan with you. All right, we're helping you out this time. They're going to talk about opioid settlement one-on-one. Yeah, good morning. Appreciate you all waiting patiently. Hold on for a second. Chris, can you hear back in the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, sometime it works, sometime it doesn't, but anyway, go ahead.
I have strong voice, but lots to say.
Right.
But again, Nidia Sash Davah, Director of Strategic Health and Opioid Initiatives with the North County Association of County Commissioners. So I'd like to do a little today and to see old friends meet them. And so I was about the national opioid settlement and what it was like here in North Carolina. So I'm joined with Michaeli in the region. He will pop up in a little bit. I have to share this in the chat, but in this package, you've got a lot more information than we're going to have time to share orally today. But if you all have questions, we're obviously here today every day. Because we know that this is the long term commitment and opportunity. So just for awareness, folks in the room, the North County Association of County Commissioners is a membership organization of all North County counties. We empower all one hundred counties that work together in the federal government system. And our mission is very much to support and promote the well-being of all North County counties through advocacy, education, research, and member services. And so Amy and I are both part of the Opioid Settlement Consortium. We're here to help improve the county, help the local counties. And currently are really focused on supporting local governments and utilizing the settlement money to rationalize resources and impact on the health of all the states of the province. So making sense of what North County Government is, putting my document that governs, what we can do with the money, where it needs to be put, what we look towards, through planning, communication, and evaluation and report. So we're here for the whole process where we understand this is a really huge opportunity. And so we're here to help you with the whole process. We are also a part of Core N C, which is a community of research and research. Which is a consortium of four different agencies. We're here to represent Core N C, North County Department of Justice, the N C, the National Research Center, North County Medical Services, as well as N C. And so we are essentially the sort of infrastructure that enables the sellers in North Carolina. And so we all help with those different things. So the M L A is sort of enforced and defended by the Director of Justice, who's in the union, who can see and local. The N C is very much about collecting the process of data. They help house our very good nationally. I need a two-year website, but it's how you see. And then at D H H, I'm going to see if you can provide all this stuff for the first one. We also are really just proud of the workers that we're building the facilities that we're working with. There are so many wonderful people based in health departments, charities, offices, U N S departments, and resources and whatnot, that are all really committed to making the best use of this money. And so I just want to celebrate with the United Nations of Government. And also just a fundamental mission that really works out to help the county and the state of North Carolina. And so without these programs, none of this would happen. So we appreciate that's why we come as well. So just quick orientation, you all probably heard in the news, the National Opioid Settlements. So this is essentially a collection of many, many thousands of settlements with small organizations, internal government, state governments. And so collectively, it's probably about actually filtered, this is bad ability now at this point. But it's drug distributors, drug distributors, pharmacies, the consulting companies, all that. And it's sort of coming in waves since North Carolina. So collectively, we're receiving about one point five billion dollars of that collective bid. And what's really unique is that we know in Carolina, we have said that for eighty-five percent of the dollars comes from North Carolina, like directly to our local governments. We are unlike, this is the highest percentage of local governments compared to any other state. The fifteen percent remaining goes to the North County General Center, that actually leads to a region on bigger statewide projects. But we made a really conscious choice that we understand people who are living it, people in counties, really know the best that they need. And so we've got the resources, opposing the candidates, the people that experience it.
And you're talking about an eighteen-year period too, right?
Correct. So the payments are coming over the course of eighteen years. Granted, about year two forty, depending on how you count it. But it's through two thousand and thirty-eight that local governments will be receiving payments. The money is front-loaded in the first couple of years, depending on who the settlement is with. So like Walmart's overall program can afford to pay out that portion of the settlement in a year. But the smaller companies have to spend it out every once in a while. And so that's why the money sort of fluctuates, depending on which, depending on the online and the offline. And so we're in about the year three. So Halifax County, over the course of the twenty twenty-three, will be receiving about five point four million dollars. And you want to just emphasize that like you do not need to spend the money getting it or receiving it. So this is not like a grant where we have like a timeline, you're one year, three years, five years to spend the money. You can spread it out over the whole course of the settlement, so even beyond that. We also understand that some of the zones that you need to spend the money as they get it, or they want to save up for a bigger project, or you're including a creation, other kinds of reasons. There's many options to do it, but over the course, you'll be receiving a lot of money. I just know for the public in the room as well, is that local governments, you know, don't have to spend it to receive it. That's sort of the need to tell us what they're telling us. So cool. So I'll just go over that. Unlike other places. On the N C, if you're a seller, you've got a website. You've got hundreds of papers, and you can get links to the settlements, add new payments, and settlements are finalized. This upcoming address will be investigated. So take a look and we'll let you know when that happens. So the M L A, which is again the document that governs the opioid settlements, is provided for the local portion, has five assignments for local governments. The first came to establish a special revenue fund, so that all counties, local governments are ready to do this. But essentially, it's to keep the money sort of in its own pot, right? So you learn lessons from the tobacco settlement, which is in the sort of the life of settlement, that goes straight over to the second. So we want to make sure that we have an easier way to track and manage where the money is being used for, how much is left. And so this is, you know, thumbs up for accountability for governments. All local governments have a special revenue fund. If a settlement comes through that is not, sort of the M L A does not apply to, that can be funds, they should not be kept in the special revenue fund. Your staff is very well versed in this, and we can of course answer any questions if you need to. This is a big part of what you all are going to be responsible for. But the second requirement is that local governments must authorize spending at a time. So this money cannot be used to reverse housing expenses. It cannot be used to sort of back any of the older projects. But essentially, you have to pre-authorize before you spend any money. You have a few requirements, which strategy, N C, M L A, or the law of the fund, for how much money, for what period of time, start and end, it's that kind of thing. And so you'll probably see revolutions come past your desk as projects sort of come online. So N C A C has a template for revolution. And we are happy to work with your staff to make sure that like it's all on the, you know, all aligned and all that thing. But just to make sure that we leave the requirements to get money. You are allowed to pass many revolutions in a year as you like. They don't have to be one at a time. A lot of local governments, to be honest, are picking a cycle, like the lines of the budget, just to make it a little bit easier to keep up with, since all annual reporting is also tied to the fiscal year. But just know that if there's a project that comes online, you'll need to pass the medical reviews as you need to get projects going. This is on the opioidsettlement dot web site. But so far, ninety local governments have approved and shared opioid settlement spending plans. Of those, ninety, eighty-eight of them have chosen to do option A or exhibit A strategies, on the same way that the power that rules E C M L is somewhat of an after-see. And so not only is there the N C M L, which explains sort of what you can do, like how you have to manage it, but either A, it was a high-impact strategy, and B, it's a CD, always have it in your head. So I'll explain that in a second. But I'm sure you've found what exhibit A and exhibit B. So the differences between them, but this is basically the strategies that are eligible under the N C M L. And so again, lessons learned from the tobacco settlement. The whole point of the opioid settlement is to try to save lives for people dying of opioid overdose. Unfortunately, North Carolina is losing practically ninety people every single day. And so we're really trying to keep this money focused in on sort of the issue at hand, which is people dying of the overdose. And so in the M L A, exhibit A, which is again a high-impact list, but I'll dance through it in a minute to give you the orientation of the strategies that are eligible. But it's, these are like noted stuff works. We have good examples of programs. All of them work in Carolina. It is strategies that are closest to the people at risk of dying. And it points to people alive and saving and helping. And so this list is available to you at any time. You can activate any one of these strategies at any time, do a resolution. And my dream, as I say, is that in every local county, you must realize we have every one of these strategies at some point, once we get to the settlement, you just have to figure out where everyone else is starting. So that might differ, but eventually, I think that every county will have every bit of a strategy online. And then exhibit B is essentially a list, a much longer list of strategies, but they're sort of the ripple effect. So exhibit A is closest to the people at risk, trying to keep them alive and safe and healthy. Exhibit B is sort of a system that cares for further removal of people. Still there it is, but further removed. And unlike the M C, it results right away. So we have to find a balance. So this issue... So this issue, we want to keep people alive and improve our system of care, so we're not having the same conversation 15 weeks a year, right? The trick about exhibit C though, is that local governments are required to go through a very detailed prescribed collaboration planning process, that's detailed in exhibit C. Yeah, you're literally at A, B, C, right? And so exhibit C includes a required list of stakeholders, many steps, which does not, the local governments don't have to do it, right? If one of you do an A, but you choose to go to B, that's cool, we'll help you go through that process and document that helps the justice. And so one thing, a question I get a lot is, you know, well, what about all the other drugs? Like, yeah, this is true. People are dying from polysubstances, we're going to solve them, we're going to help their system. We also need to acknowledge that we're all local people, we're all great profit leaders futures, and so we all have managed many challenges at the same time. And so a statement in the N C M O A says that in line with the national settlement agreement, funds makes support programs and services for persons with opioid use disorder, or any concurrent substance use disorder or mental health conditions. So there's a big acknowledgement that we're all dealing with many challenges at the same time, but we really need to focus in first on people with opioid use disorder, and those are the ones that are dying, adults. And so again, keeping people alive, keeping people safe and healthy. And so if people ask that, I always have to say, well, let's go through the filters, right? Exhibit, in line with the settlements, exhibit A, focus on people with opioid use disorder or opioid use, and then we can acknowledge or adjust the ownership. And so this is exhibit A, the high-impact evidence strategy, and closest to the people at risk for dying. So included in your packets a lot more, like information on each one of those strategies. But I'm going to just, for the sake of discussion, kind of finding my own sort of questions of, are any, kind of what is involved and why they're here? I'm really proud of exhibit A, North Carolina, having the resource for other states. We just had an annual convening a couple weeks ago, and just learning that like, a lot of states outside of North Carolina, this is all worth start, right? And really, we've already given a place to start. This is very much in line with a state action plan at the local, this is not a new topic for our local counties, right? We don't hear about this stuff all the time. Even though the opportunity, because some of those new issues, right? And so we want to build on past successes and do more of local government work. And so collaboration to be planning is essentially the infrastructure for the settlements. This is where lots of local governments are hiring kind of coordinators, or project directors or whatnot. But this is encouraged for both A or B, it doesn't matter, you can always use both in the same time, whether it's A or B. But this is sort of most of core foundation. Evidence-based addiction treatment is essentially in line with the natural addiction that is the, the addiction society rule. American society of addiction, that is a separate, ooh, my best follow that there. But point is, is that we're trying to increase access to opioid use disorder treatments, which include methadone, methamphetamine, amitriptyline, wherever people interact with them at the same time. So how do we get goal standards, medical care, to keep people alive wherever people want? It helps coordinate through EMS, through our, whether it's healthcare centers, like any place that there are patients, because we have to want to do our best to increase access to affordable medication, because it will extend people alive. Recovery support, recovery housing, and employment-related services are really acknowledging that like, there are drivers and root causes of drug use. And so how do we create stability for people so they can enter into long-term recovery, and maintain a healthy life for the long-term, right? So drug use potentially is something that features deeper societal ills, right, a deeper pain. And so how do we do our best to support and build a community job, so that people are less likely to feel like they have to make that choice, but find a relief through their drug use. And so recovery support is really about connections. Some people say it's the operative indication of connections, of connections to people, community services. So there's a real emphasis on peer support. Recovery housing is specifically for people who use drugs, for people who are on medication assisted treatment or recovery. Employment-related services are very much about helping people get back to work, and supporting them in that, their job training and preparation. Early intervention, I was a little bit of time on, they're really focused on our youth and adolescents that are showing signs of struggle. So I will differentiate between primary prevention, people I'm more familiar with. Primary prevention is much more about sort of universal approaches, so like the entire school system, for the entire neighborhood, the entire community. Now, but earlier mention, again, strategies closest to people at risk for that offense are about some sort of flag, and help elderly, caring elderly adult, knowing enough to say, this kid's showing signs of struggle, I need to wrap him up, give him a little bit of love and more support. And so it's preparing the adults around them to sort of intervene, and then offer them care. So it's really about those kids and adolescents that are already showing signs of struggle. We understand though, young people, that mental health issues usually show up first before substance use, and so there's a little bit of flexibility there, because you can't ruin that existential substance use disorder, but you can certainly feel the kind of struggle, anxiety, depression, or in an environment where they might be experiencing trauma or harmful instability. Community naloxone distribution, post-overdose response, and certain service programs, and certain management and crisis response. We're losing eight people every day, we've got to let us keep people alive. Naloxone is a medication that the only thing that does it reverses opioid overdose. So basically, if there's too much opioid in your brain, or too much opioid in your system, it shuts down your breathing in two different ways, sort of tells your body that the marijuana box is in, or too much CO2. So naloxone would say, turn, turn, let's switch back on, and make them breathe again. So that's usually why people die of opioid overdose, is that it messes with the way depression. So naloxone is a very cheap medication, been around for 50 years, E M S, A, B, C, whatever. It is now over the counter. There are many combinations of it, there's the anal version, all from the original, and also the intramuscular version, which is much cheaper. But the idea is that we want naloxone in every first aid kit, and so have community trained to be able to recognize signs of opioid overdose to be able to respond. In some places, you're actually more likely to come across someone who's overdosing from an opioid, they're having a crisis. But we do have A D's that all are kind of buildings. So I think the goal is to really try to get naloxone into the hands of people that are ready to respond, which includes people who use drugs, the people who love them, but much more likely to be right there, because we admire that sometimes. Any second without oxygen, we're going to break, okay? Post-overdose response teams are really led by our EMS, as well as in partnership with health services, community health worker, health, care, fear, fear navigator, sort of the magic formula, is the MS with the health broker. And so essentially, this is probably the place that someone who's overdosed is much more likely to overdose again. And so how do we do our best to, in those pivotal outstanding after overdose, which can be really scary for us, and you'll say, God, we are so glad you're still with us, what can we do to support you, capacity, care, and services? And so post-overdose response report teams are really about leadages to care. And so we are really proud of the innovations that happened all over North Carolina, post-overdose response. Our EMS have been taking a lead on doing, for example, like starting people on medication in the field, and getting some type of medical hold to continue those treatments. It certainly helps reduce costs, and all sorts of, instead of people. Service programs is also on this list, and we legalized it in North Carolina in 2016. About 85, I think, 80% or something like that, of North Carolina, kind of covered by a service program. Decades of research that say this is without reducing disease transmission, and also just connect with people for care. And so these are folks who are really about connections, again, that connection. So you know, when you go to a conference and someone hand you a pen, and they really try not really got the pen, it's really about trying to start a conversation. So that's essentially what service programs are, they're also resources to start that conversation. People who go to service programs, they're after seven times, they'll have to continue their treatment, and that's, I think, are really good things. So they do many services, not only access to healthcare, but they also help with job training, filling in, helping applications, and so signing up for, they're solid classes with all the things that they might need, to sort of help the person. We're tied to the 11 and 12. This is sort of acknowledging that in North Carolina, people that are leaving incarceration are 50 times more likely to die in the first two weeks of living. This is while we're still technically, most often there are care, for many super agents that are around that, but this is not okay. And so the exhibit A list sort of pulled out this population of folks, particularly highest income, and doing our best to divert or deflect or help treat those bothering their care. And so the system of diversion and reflection is essentially trying to keep people who really need healthcare out of the justice system, know that jails are our largest healthcare provider in our country, even though they were not set up to be that way, and also they want to do that, and they understand that they have to throw that away for now. And so how do we do our best to divert people away from the legal system, and really get the connected care as they need to? Addiction treatment for incarcerated persons is similar to two, but specific to the same jail. The American disability that protects people who use drugs, and the death rate through the books. And so as part of the constitutional right to healthcare while they're with us, addiction treatment, they serve as part of that, in this service. In order to do our best to meet that constitutional right, we're trying to get all jails online to provide medication to opioid users. They also, the whose pride, help people get admitted, through the prison, and then cross the jail. Should be treated as a chronic illness, just as someone returning from ID's or a faculty who, we would want to provide them the continuing medications for those chronic illnesses, somewhere, same for the substitutions or whatever. Reentry programs, if you can allow me all familiar with this, with this idea that how do we do our best to support people as they're leaving our facilities, connect them to classes, services, and care, even when they're looking over the town. And so because this combination is such a need for me, is mainly a strategy on the N C M O A, to help support them, that transition back to community. I don't know, it's a lot, y'all. But the point is, like, just this whole person, whole community care, do whatever. So that's when I say this is my dream, my hope is that all kinds will have this girl in the nation. But you guys get to keep this going. So, Amy, down. Would you like to speak?
Hi, everybody. I'm Amy Oregan. I'm a manager of health programs with the opioid settlement assistance team that they talked about. I know we're running a long time, I'm going to make this one really quick in these last few slides. So just a couple of other requirements of the N C M O A. One of them is following all the reporting requirements that are outlined there. A big thing in the N C M O A is transparency and accountability. As a state, we have made a commitment to make it very clear how we're using this money, and make it very clear to the public, so that everyone knows what's going on, and that we can all be accountable to how we use these really important resources, this kind of...
Once in a generation.
Yeah, once in a generation opportunity to really fix some wrongs. So these are a few of the things that need to be reported. Your staff has already done an amazing job keeping up with these pieces. So like Nitti was saying, your spending authorizations have to be reported within 90 days. These are then all publicly available online on our Core N C website. You also have annual financial reports and annual impact reports that are due within 90 days at the end of the fiscal year. And then finally, if you were to go for option B, you would need to document all of that collaborative strategic planning that Nitti discussed, and approve that, and also submit that. Again, all of this stuff ends up online, publicly available, anyone can look it up anytime, and that's the case for all of our local governments. And then finally, the last requirement of the M L A is holding an annual public meeting. So this can fall along the fiscal year or the calendar year. It's a little bit easier for the fiscal year, that's what most counties are doing, and most local governments are doing. But again, the point is transparency, accountability, collaboration. So it's meant to be open to the public, designed for you to have a sense of coordination and collaboration, work with your community, share your progress, work towards planning, things like that. These are some resources, again, all of these are in your package, reach out to us, and all the websites that we talked about. And finally, my favorite slide, so Halifax County participated in the Opioid Settlement Academy over the last couple of months. The team did an absolutely incredible job. We had two convenings, one in October and one in January, and then it sort of ended with this final poster presentation at the N C Summit on Reducing Overdose. County Manager Dia Denton, County Attorney Glenn Rollins, we've got our EMS Director James Ellen in the back, and my amazing panel over here, Christina Wells, Tom and Barry Duncan, they all participated. It was a really incredible honor to work with this team. I'll say to all of the commissioners, this staff is really, really thoughtful, really considerate of how to take things slow, take your time to make sure you're getting it right for the people of Halifax. So really appreciate this staff here. You can reach out to our team anytime, we're well-connected with your staff already, but any questions we can ever answer for you, we are truly at your beck and call anytime. We enjoy doing this. And that's it. Thank you all so much. We'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments over? If not, you know, we just probably need to receive the opioid settlement presentation that they made today, just a motion to receive it.
Motion to receive.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, our second. Second by Commissioner Silver. And a further discussion, all those favors are aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Ms. Denton, do you and Mr. Rollins, or our deputy county manager have anything you want to say? Because I know y'all did a lot of training together with this.
I'll do it briefly. I just want to, want to thank Nitti and Amy for, number one, putting up with us. I think the best thing about being part of the Settlement Academy was, it gave us dedicated time to think these things through, so that we can make the best use of these funds for our citizens. And we appreciate you all walking us through these logic models that we are now are very familiar with, and how to really make those work. We all really enjoy it. I think we have a good path now to take steps from here, and we will certainly reach out to you for additional guidance. So just want to say thank you, that they are absolutely invaluable to this project.
Great, very good. Anyone else? If not, thank you all for coming to Halifax County on this rainy day. And believe it or not, you know, of course, I went to Riley for the final, but you know, they were just singing praises the whole time, then, even Glenn. Now, you know Glenn don't go around struggling to a whole lot of folks, so. See, I could talk to him in a camp, well, he and I grew about 40 years back. When they were talking about that new courthouse, new courthouse this morning, he and I looked at each other and kind of laughed, because he was a defense attorney, and I was a probation officer back then when it was built. So we just go way back. But anyway, do thank you all for joining down on this rainy day, and thank you for being here, and have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Special congratulations.
Okay, this time we're going to have Beth Virchell, Cooperative Extension Director, N C Cooperative Extension. Wow. Beth, you got your...
I pay well.
You got your own chilling squad.
I have a great squad. So Beth Virchell, I'm the Cooperative Extension Director at the Halifax County Center of N C Cooperative Extension. Thank you guys for having us here today. I wanted to go through each year, we go and document impacts of the each annual year that we have. So I wanted to share some of those with you. I'm very proud of the accomplishments of this team. All right, which one?
Page down.
Page?
It's on the right side.
Ah, page down, thank you. So what do we do? A lot of people aren't aware of what N C Cooperative Extension does, but we are a partnership between N C State University, N C A and T University, and the county government. So Halifax County Government is an equal partner in the N C Cooperative Extension Center. We have three focus areas, agricultural production systems, health and nutrition, and four issues development. So with that, okay, so we are a cycle of solutions. We take research-based information that we get from N C State and N C A and T, we identify issues at the local level, whether it be agriculture, health and nutrition, or youth development. We research those solutions, then we take that information and give it back out to our citizens to help improve lives. So just a few highlights from 2024 agricultural production systems. We reached 668 farmers, we increased their knowledge and skills in best agricultural practices. We had pesticide applicators educated, 778 of those, so that they have continued education credits to maintain proper pesticide application safety. 96 animal waste operators got continued education credits, so that they could properly apply animal waste in our county. We've reached timber owners for harsh management education, impacting over 17,000 acres of timberland in this county. And 1,342 individuals gained knowledge or acquired skills related to fruit and vegetable gardening. I'm a big picture fan, I think pictures speak more than words on the screen. So those are some activities that we've done over the year in agriculture. And health and nutrition, 233 adults received education, increased physical activity. 95 community members participated in nutrition education classes to improve... 95 community members participated in nutrition education classes to improve knowledge of healthy eating. 186 people intend, they declared and intend to use local foods for cooking, preparing, or preserving foods. 65 food handlers increased knowledge and skills in safe food handling practices through our Safe Plates Program. 54 participants are growing food for home consumption as a result of programming through extension. And 3,336 individuals were provided food at no cost in partnership of the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina for a monthly food day. Okay, 4H youth development, well, youth development as a whole, everything that I've heard today from other speakers, youth development is where we can start trying to educate, create, build our youth. So through our WIOA Student Incentive Program and Operation Restart Program, in 2024, 130 at-risk youth have provided safe space and opportunity to grow, and simultaneously fulfilled community service requirements of other, of more than 2,000 hours. More than 30 youth a week were provided free summer day camp activities over a nine-week period. 21 at-risk youth graduated from high school, and three of those students went on to enter college. Eight youth earned job placements. And then ultimately preventative education was provided in all county school systems through 12th grades. Through 4H youth development, 4H is the largest national youth development program in the country. In Halifax County alone, 1,029 youth in schools have provided nutrition, food safety, and physical activity education, that was through Operation Restart, Ethno-programming, and specific 4H programs. 1,086 youth enhanced their knowledge of agriculture and animals. 248 participants attended 4H day camps here on Rural Life Center, and 10 youth counselors learned valuable employment lessons. 11 4Hers competed at the district level in 4H presentations and public speaking. Six youth competed in state presentation finals, and of those six, three earned silver and one bronze medal. And 15 at-risk youth participated in the Northeast District 4H Junior Deal Project End Show. We are also very lucky in Halifax County, we have a federally funded grant program called Steps to Health, and they support projects across all areas of our program. In Halifax County, in Halifax County, we have seed libraries in all counties, all libraries across the county partnered with Halifax County Public Library System, where consumers can go and exchange seeds. One middle school received walking classroom supplies, they can actively put on headphones, go out and learn while they're walking to stimulate physical activity. And then we have four story walks across the county, at Rural Life Center, at Belmont Elementary, at Chaloner, and Don 316 Center in Littleton. So the story walks are, there's boards, and you have to walk from board to board to read the stories, so that also stimulates physical activity. So fiscal resource is part of what we do, we try to reinvent it to support our funds so that we're not 100% relying on county dollars. And '24, we brought in over $443,000 in donations, sponsorships, and grants to support our local programs and expansion. And $421,000 of that includes the Part F grant that we will be building a multi-purpose recreation facility at 4H Rural Life Center, which we're extremely excited about. Also, we couldn't do a lot of what we do without volunteer support. So in 2024, we had 407 volunteer hours donated, which is a value to our citizens of over $12,000. Let's skip Harvest Days. We also, in October, held a 32nd Annual Harvest Days Festival. So this year, all school systems, except 401, private school attended, over 800 fourth and fifth graders, and on Saturday, 2,000. So I think Harvest Days has been around for a long time, we've adjusted, we backed off, we've rebuilt, and I think it just continues to be stronger and stronger each year. And this is everybody in the county. All community organizations are invited, all county departments are invited, so it's not just about Harvest Day adventure, it's about sharing in counties' resources with all of our citizens. Much of the work that we do is guided by our county advisory leadership council. So we work with community members in different areas that cover our agricultural production, and cover health and nutrition, interest in youth development. And we rely on them to give us feedback, to guide us, to help us with needs assessment in the county, as well as we task them of being advocates for extension programs throughout the county. We have some dedicated people, Ms. Denton's one of them, is one of our members, she doesn't have a choice to be here, but we do have some other members here. Jody Knight, Dana Long, and Ken Reynolds, who have stuck around to hear us and support us today. And then I want to ask Mr. Reynolds to come up as our chair of this year to say a couple words.
Okay. Thank you for having me. Ken Reynolds with the Halifax County Beekeepers Association. I'd like to thank Beth and the Extension Office for supporting us for many, many years. They also support the master gardeners and the horse council. The biggest thing about the honeybees is they're important to agriculture. Aside from giving us the great honey that they give us, the most important benefit of a honeybee is the pollination in agriculture crops. In Halifax County, probably the biggest crops are pollinated, obviously the orchards, the peach trees, cucumbers, squash, all of you know, and things like that. Nationally, I guess, probably the biggest thing we think about for beekeepers is the pollination of the almond trees in California. That's, their almonds are 100% pollinated by honeybees. Usually, anywhere from about a million and a half to 2 million hives or colonies are needed for this pollination. This year, the honeybees have suffered major losses. Not only the losses we had in west part of state due to hurricane, but also commercial beekeepers that were pollinating the grows in California suffered between 60 and 70% losses. Over 142 million colonies were lost. Now, how does bees repopulate themselves? Well, every spring, the bees pretty much, the queen goes to work and starts laying like crazy, getting ready for the honey close season. That usually builds up in a hive to where the hive becomes crowded. The bees, at that point in time, when you get overcrowded, they will, the queen will leave by half the hive and go out and start a new colony. So pretty much that way, the bees are able to repopulate themselves. Now, what do we do as far as the Beekeepers Association here? Our goal is to educate, to support the local beekeepers, to educate the community, and things like that. Now, one of the things that happens when these bees repopulate, they swarm. And when they swarm, they'll go to a location, maybe a branch, a bumper of a car, or a tree. Sometimes they'll go and take a feed to somebody's house, and a lot of times, people get concerned about that. And our group and our members will be happy to go out and collect these swarms. We'll collect them to the minahives and basically help them supply the hatchway. In fact, we've removed, I know a couple of years ago, removed the swarms from the courthouse here, also from the, I think, the jail. A couple of years ago, I think they had gotten inside the jail, and we came in and pulled those out. And also the 4H center, the columns up in there, we removed them on that. So we ask them to inform people, if you see a swarm, don't try to kill them, call either a beekeeper that you know, call the Extension Office and get in touch with us, and from that, we can help take care of our bees. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ken's just representative of one of the different organizations that we've worked with, that cover, like I said, the Horse Council's on there, we have representatives from the health field, farmers, small and commercial farmers, just from communities. We try really hard to have a well-balanced group so that we get insight and input as to how we need to grow our programs. All right, my favorite part of the day is youth testimonial. So, without youth, we aren't successful, we are not reaching our youth. So I want to invite Denaim Peterson, or Pete, as his friends know, up to say a few words. He has been a resident in the 4H County Dairy Project for the past two years, and our paths are all their way, they're arriving, and we'll start practice again next Thursday. So you can tell a little bit about his experience, as well as what else you've done.
I am the student of Operation Restart, and I've worked with the dairy project, the dairy project. Where we've raised accounts through our training and started competition, where we can come first, second, and third place. And I came in third place in two years now. So I would like to say thank you for our pressure on what they have done over the past eight years I've been here. I got in trouble a lot when I was young, but they have taught me a lot more than life lessons over the years I've been here. They taught me respect, you should always give respect, and to, at least I want to treat, communicate. They teach me how I want to communicate, and how I need to listen, and being someone who wants to be liked. And he has a good heart, he also has a lot of patience to be used. And he's a good person, and his partner is a good dude, and this is from all that way.
Thank you, Pete. I know Mr. Silver had to participate recently in all that livestock and all that, and I'm just messing with Mr. Commissioner Silver now. Did you help train Mr. Silver to show him how to rap? Is that not okay? I heard it was an experience for him.
As long as you're my trainer.
I heard Mr. Silver did a great job, and I heard he really enjoyed it, and I heard he had a ball.
What is the dairy?
So the task comes out, and it's an eight-week project, and our dairy show is the first, I think it's June 2nd, it's the first Sunday in June. June 1st, thank you, Brad. It's a partnership with Halifax Warren, Northampton, Franklin, and Jones and Craven County, and we'll all come together and kind of very proud of the show. It'll be at the Edson Livestock Arena, since it's a big enough place to hold, safely hold all the tasks. But that's fun. So Pete, it's just one testimonial of all of our...
Again, Pete, thank you so much for that.
And I've seen the growth in him.
Yeah.
And he's been very proud of us.
Good public speaker, two B's. Grade seven? What are you in school, Pete? Okay, very good. Let's get a young man out of the beginning.
Okay, well, that is all that I have today for you. If you have any questions or have any thoughts, let me know.
Okay, any thoughts, questions, comments? We don't have to take into action on our presentation, any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to...
Yo, mic on, Commissioner Silver.
Thank you for allowing me to get up and close some personal with a sheet. And thank you for not giving me a goat. A goat will buck you.
We thoroughly enjoyed it and really appreciate it. It's good for the kids to see interaction with their commissioners and people in their communities, and we appreciate it.
It was all a pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and thank you too, Commissioner Silver, for participating.
Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
Yes, sir. I love to give opportunities. Item is the next one, fiscal year 2526 proposed fee schedule. We're going to hear from our money lady, Ms. Duncan. You've been quiet today, but this is the first step in the budget approval process. Is that right, Ms. Denton?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, good morning. Good morning. I come with the proposed fee schedule for 2526. Now, this is prior to our budget work sessions, we still have in two weeks. The purpose of doing it now is so that departments can kind of know what their revenue stream will be, they can budget their expenditures. We have two versions in here, you have the yellow line version, which shows the proposed changes. And you have representatives from the departments here to answer any questions that you may have for this. We've got, we're uniformed, so like, when you see something to charge back fees or credit card or whatever, all departments, it's the same thing, and that is what the bank charges us. So when someone has a return item, our account is charged for, and then we're going to, it's about two persons who submitted payments to us. So that fee is $25 for all departments. And various other departments submitted changes as well. You have EMS, fire marshal, scroll down, health, environmental health, library, they changed from a book to an iPad, it's the same thing, but it's just a different item. Public utilities, water, registered fees, that's that same $25 fee, solar water conservation, and the tax departments. If you have any questions regarding these fees, the representative from the department can answer them for you.
Oh, Commissioner Barrett?
Are we, are we, can we ask?
Yes, sir, go ahead, if you need to answer a question, you're okay.
Oh, so I gotta, I'm trying not to be too wrong here, but, so we're going to approve these fees, right? Is that, that's what we're doing here? I'm sorry, I have to get my mic.
So the first meeting in April every year, we traditionally bring the proposed fee schedule for your preliminary approval, because that affects how the rest of the budget can be formulated. We have to estimate revenues. These particular departments, and I don't see the health department here, and they have the most changes, but primarily, it's not necessarily to produce a profit, it is to adjust the actual cost of providing the service. And so let me just point out, the health department particularly, these are generally set and come down from the state, and so we just have to adopt those same fees throughout the document. These are what health departments across the state offer.
So can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
So the emergency services, this new non-emergency franchise fees, what is that?
Oh, you have the EMS director coming.
Good afternoon. So the non-emergency transport service, that is the agencies you see outside of Halifax County EMS that give you trips from like nursing homes to doctors' offices, hospitals, restaurants, and things like that. We currently have three agencies in Halifax County that have a non-emergency franchise. We're currently in the process of revising our franchise, possibly having to interview some more agencies if we want to have here. So as we were doing this, we just looked at the counties across the state and how they're doing it. And most of these counties, because it requires time and effort to review these franchise applications, and what we want is quality services that are coming in here that need business. And so we just looked at these other agency or other counties, and we kind of copied the fees from them, and just kind of, they don't make this money, they're just there to recoup our time and effort that we have put into reviewing these agencies, and also just kind of make sure it's going to make them think twice about coming here and not just doing something that's not going to...
Okay.
Have another question, Commissioner Barrett?
I think I was, that was the only one I had for that one.
Okay.
And if somebody else, I don't want to, I mean, I got a couple more, but for...
Go ahead.
I don't want to...
Yeah, just go ahead.
And so the public utilities?
That's Chris, Chris Williams, he's coming in.
So I guess my question here is, because these, we're talking about things now that's going to start affecting everybody, is the water rates and stuff like that. So, I mean, the increase we're talking about is, are we covering costs that have gone up? And I, and I'll preface, just to you, as I preface this, to anybody else I ask questions to, I'm just trying to be a good steward of what we're spending, and I want to be sure that we're not raising fees because we got, we got less people getting permios. In other words, I don't want to be raising, I don't want to be raising fees to cover costs we're not paying for because we got less people getting the service. costs we're not paying for because we got less people getting the service. If we got less people getting the service, we need to look at costs and not necessarily look at fees. But now, so that's my question, is are these just a piece of pipe costs more, a fire hydrant costs more, you know?
Right, so typically, the way that we try to look at setting our fees is, there is a fixed rate multiple, and that goes towards maintenance of the system, whether it be personnel, pump stations, pipe in the ground, project development, administration, you know, our office accepting payments and managing the administrative fees, that sort of thing. And then the per thousand gallon fees typically are used to cover, since we're a purchase-only system, we don't pay water, we're having to buy it from San Jacinto to Towne-Wilde. So, that covers those costs associated with purchasing that water, getting it from the input source into our power, and that's how we break it down. We don't have for this year planned increases in personnel, that sort of thing. We're all aware of what inflation has done to cost of projects, from school buildings to new jails to courthouse renovations, it's impacting public utilities as well. Additionally, over the past three years, we have tried to squeeze rates tight, that has burned us in our audit. So, some of this adjustment is to help out with our audit, make sure that we are maintaining the required fund balance that we had to have as far as operating capital to cover. If, if we had another, what we'll forbid, another COVID, and everything had to shut down, we still got to get water to people. We've got to have money in the bank, sitting in a fund in reserve to cover that time period, any lag, emergencies, if we have Hurricane Floyd come again and knock the pipe down 301. And so, that's what that structure is based on, and those increase.
I think, Commissioner Barrett, Ms. Duncan has something to add.
Mary, can you address that from the auditing perspective and how we have to keep up the certain ratios that the county has to maintain through the enterprise fund?
Our revenue ratio is, uh, calculated, and it's about the same as the thing that we, um, mentioned in our audit this year, that our ratio wasn't sufficient, really much, you know, we talked about it in this, in our audit presentation, that it had to be above a three. I think ours was fractionally below three, but, so that was one of the suggestions, was that we review our rates, make sure that they were cost efficient, that they at least grow even, and that we would get our ratio up, and that indicator would go away for the audit.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Barrett?
Um, now, dear, you let me know if this is a question asked now in the budget thing, like, so do you, do you have an estimate of how much more these fees for all the public utilities is going to generate for, I mean, seeing we're raising all these fees, how much extra money that's going to generate in a year? Is that?
I'll start, and I'm gonna look, Chris. So, each department has their allotment. The enterprise fund is a little bit different, and so everything has to balance. So, what they've had to do was estimate their expenses, and then, in the enterprise funds case, you have to find revenues to balance with those expenses. That's what Chris was mentioning about just inflation and general costs going up, so that you can meet those expense estimates.
And I'll add on to that. So, UNC's survival finance sector has a great tool that I have used a lot this year, especially to make sure that these rate adjustments that we're making do not significantly negatively impact lower income. And so, in making these adjustments, we're still keeping our percentages roughly the same, so that I do not want to impact significantly our lower income, because that is just not how I personally want to operate, Ellis. So, and I'm going off my memory, numbers does pretty good, but I won't say that in the past years, we've been impacting about 1.3% of our population, and that number still stays at 1.3% with these.
How many gallons in a month is a typical, do you have, do you have an average household?
So, typical household of four will use between three to four thousand gallons.
So, you're talking, you're talking about, we're gonna, we're gonna go up on an average household water bill, seven or eight dollars?
Yeah, per month, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, something?
And I just think one of those, you know, also along with, I don't want to see people having, you know, water bills get too high either, I mean, we got to keep in mind, all these tap fees and everything else are, that, that, we need more affordable, you know, decent housing in this county, and every time we go up on those things, you know, that's just, that's adding more money into that cost of that house you're going to get, you know?
And at current rates and at these new rates, we're still losing about $400 every time.
Okay, fine. I didn't mean to take up too much time, Chairman, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Absolutely, great questions, Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Redden?
So, with infrastructure upgrades and investments, not only to the current system, but across some of the towns that potentially could partner with us, improve rates, improve water quality, improve our output.
So, each independent system, say, Town of Enfield, Town of Halifax, Town of Scotland, well, Enfield not the best example, because they have no water.
What about Littleton?
But Littleton, Halifax, Scotland, we sell water to them. They are a separately permitted entity, and they, as you said, their rates based on their customer base. So, the only impact that we should have, we as the county system should have on their rates, would be what we charge in the bulk rate that you see. I'm not going to give my butt. Not Chris, yeah, the bulk rate.
15.1, 1.4.
385 per thousand gallon. Um, now, that's not to say that we don't work with them, order with them, I mean, they need equipment, they need help making repairs, they call us, and we show up and do what we have to do, figure it out later, as far as who pays for what. Typically, from a budget perspective, the county's only impact to them is, what is my bulk rate going to be?
If they became a part of the Halifax County water system, would that impact rates, output, and provide a basis for more economic development as well?
Yeah, so theoretically and mathematically, yes, because if those customers became customers of Halifax County, then that changes the math per, per unit, all right? In addition, additional consideration is that the county is going to have to look at what staff we have, can we cover taking on that large of a number of customers? What infrastructure do they have in place? Is it in good shape? Is it in bad shape? You know, what do we have to do to bring it up to meet quote-unquote our normal standards? And that's why mergers of that type had to be evaluated, you know, are their water meters compatible with our water meter reading systems? Have they been maintaining their water towers, or are they full of sediment gunk? And those sorts of things. So, short answer is, yes, that should benefit everybody. Long answer is, maybe it's not going to be as beneficial with.
And last question, would this potentially open up new job opportunities for, for example, some of my students who are graduating from HCC?
Yeah, so, in our current budget, our staff is remaining strong and fortunately, you know, the water side of things, well, and this year on the solid ways right now, we're, we're fully staffed and in pretty good shape. But then, what you're alluding to with expansions and that sort of thing would certainly open up opportunities to increase our employee base, and we will be needing certified operators to take the place of the certified operators that we have that may be thinking about retiring.
And some of that was discussed later on in the meeting as well, too.
Which I'm threatened that they can retire in a while.
We're not letting you go. You can't go anywhere yet.
Okay, any other questions, comment? Very good questions, Commissioners. All right, you're welcome, Commissioner Redden. All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Did you finish?
Yes, sir, so, what I need now, because if there aren't any other questions, I would need action to adopt the proposed fee schedule this fiscal year 2526.
Okay, with that being said, can I get a motion?
Move that we adopt the fee schedule for, proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Redden. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose? Thank you. Good questions, Commissioners, to my left over here. We're going to move to the next item, but just before that, Beth, do you mind just standing up? You can come to the mic, but you don't have to introduce those two new 4H agents that you have there, and we don't need, they don't need to do a speech or anything, just tell us their names and that type thing.
Okay, so, we are very blessed in Halifax County Public Utilities, and now have two full 4H agents next to the support of the county. So, Steffi Proctor is our traditional 4H agent, she's responsible for 4H curriculum in the schools, 4H Congress, 4H Camps, 4H Club Support. And then Sidney Johnson joined us in December, and she is our youth community recreation development agent. So, she's the one that is gathering her information to get out in communities, to work with communities for the recreation in the municipalities and in rural areas that don't have access to photographic parks and recreation.
Okay, again, welcome. Thank you, Beth. All right, at this time, we want to move to item F on the agenda, and we're going to take another break here in a second. We're here, selection of planning consultant, comprehensive development plan update, and 160D zone update from Chris Roundtree, our planning, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the board members, good afternoon. Come before you this morning asking for your consideration on selecting our planning consultants for our updates to the comprehensive development plan as well as 160D and zone updates. As you well know, our comp plan is a document that the local government do use to guide the growth and development of a community, economic development for that matter. Attached is just a brief overview of what a comp plan entails, certain specific elements of the comp plan, and also a steward engineer incorporated, their proposal. In addition, we requested that the Parks and Rec environmental element of the plan be more detailed to help assist with our park requirements when applying for grants, and that that element be capable of standing alone to satisfy our Parks and Rec master plan. We do currently have 50,000 earmarked in our budget, 24, 25, and will be budgeted remaining in for '25 and '26 specifically. Also, I just concluded some of the other proposals that we received. The first one is actually the one that they are planning over two years ago.
Right.
We also had additional insight, planning, development out of Wilmington, and then steward engineer who we are representing. You know, we have a timeframe, and we started this month, and they recently helped Nash County update their CDP, and they produced a very professional document.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Redden?
Okay, so the last CDP was published in 2002?
2002, correct.
Okay. Can you give us some insight on why it took until 2025 to begin the process of developing a new one?
Most of your CDP are usually a 20-minute, not, not 20-minute, 20-year proposal for long-range planning. The main thing is staff, we're very limited. Glenn and myself attempted it to update that, as well as the 160D updates as well. That's the main.
Okay. My next question is, we're watching EdgeCon, Nash, as well as Wilson Counties, start to develop in ways that we're not developing, and some of my research shows that Business North Carolina's website published an article about these three counties, and Jennifer Lance, Wilson's Economic Development Executive Director, explained that we have been growing our industry all this time. Wilson has water, fiber, sewer, and natural gas, and it has led to Johnson &amp; Johnson, Wreckit, as well as Scott Farmers, investing over hundreds of millions of dollars, and they also plan to bring hundreds of jobs to, to that area. So, what, moving forward, what can we strategically do as we commission this new plan to position ourselves to develop this type of economic development? Because, as you know, a lot of our youth are leaving here, some of our adults are even leaving here to find jobs in these counties when they could stay here and use their degrees from HCC, our 16 universities and colleges, as well as other places, to enrich Halifax County and take us to the next level.
Well, and we can definitely involve at the forefront, economic development with And I'm sure the other elements in here will directly tie into the Parks and Rec, which is also being developed right now, we have the master plan. I think they're in the process of doing a survey for that. And the infrastructure part, I know we will do more possible things on the infield exits to tie in, but I think overall, it would definitely help us with our strategies moving forward.
Can you give me some, maybe two or three examples of strategies?
Um, I would say, well, one for Hyattville, I think Barrett mentioned that earlier, Hyattville is a top concern for the area, not only running rapid, but a rural area. The transportation, I think that's a top key element to the whole plan as well, along with parks, Parks and Rec, now, we've got to have that for countywide, I feel that's very important.
You want to hear from my attorney this time, too? He want to add something to it, I think.
I'm got it, thank you. I just wanted to chime in, because you're asking very good questions, Commissioner Redden.
Excellent questions.
What I'll say is that it's just, they're not premature, there are those kinds of things you need to be thinking about, but this is the first step, is engaging with a consultant who will have these initial conversations with this board and others in the community about what you want the comprehensive development plan to include. There's some things you've got to include, such as planning for housing, where you want industry to be, where schools are going to industry to be, where schools are going to be, that kind of thing, that really is tied to planning and development. But these plans are much broader than that. A couple of things that aren't on the list, that's in the agenda item that I know are in our current CDP, is agriculture and agribusiness in the county, the environment, energy, infrastructure. It's not necessarily on this list, but will be part of all that. And this isn't a complete list of things that the CDP needs to address, but one of the very first things a consultant will do is to say, let's decide what we want to include in the plan. And the kinds of thing you're talking about are the things that Chris can't answer right now, but is part of this really major process of getting a new CDP put together. And then typically, what the consultant will also do is have a mechanism for doing an annual review, which you should do, an annual review of your comprehensive development plan, because things change. Things change in 10 years, much less 20 years, you're going to have tons of changes. So the critical thing right now is getting someone, and I think the staff is recommending Stewart, as I recall, getting someone involved in that to get us started on that process is the important first step, but I hope you stick around for this process because the kinds of things you're asking and want to include in it are the kinds of things that the consultant is going to want to know as well.
Well, that does give me hope, but I just don't want another 20, 30, or 40 years to pass.
Yes, sir.
And we're back, you know, talking about another CDP.
Yes, and these are not supposed to be things on the bookshelf. These are supposed to be things that are on your desk.
Right.
And when I say, I don't mean just his desk, I mean on everyone's desk about, at least once a year, looking at it to see, is this really where we still need to be going in terms of our policies about development, our policies about how we're going to try to improve economic development, how we're going to, education is another item that's in the CDP, not listed here, but it will be included. So a lot of important things, and just to give you the very broad overview about how important this document is, it is extremely important to any local government.
And I would argue it's extremely important if we implement it. If we implement it, we have to implement it.
And what, when you do that, is that's what you don't see in the background, but every time the Board of Adjustment meets, or every time the Planning Board meets, or every time you make an ordinance about planning and zoning, you have to make a finding that it's consistent with your comprehensive development plan, because you just don't do this and then ignore it. You do this and stick with it. When you make a change in zoning, be sure it's consistent with that plan. The law requires that. So, thank you.
And I, okay, I think I'll go to Davis and then Commissioner Silver.
Yes, my question was basically, with the company, Stewart Company, why did you feel that, or the team feel that this was a good company to go with?
Stewart recently did Nash County's CDP.
Okay.
Felt that was a good document they prepared, plus they can start right away.
Okay.
And I would add to that, having done a nearby county, they're familiar with
Our area.
Our area, and it's also very helpful instead of coming in from the outside and having to, you know, be new in the area.
And just one more thing, too. And Dia asked me, when we were bringing on new Commissioners, what could we include in the orientation, so this, that plans like this would have been very helpful to me when we came in, just to have the knowledge that that exists and being able to read through it. And I hope that we can encourage, once we get this new one done, that that sort of becomes a part where we, at the end of our meetings, do we go back, refer to it so often to monitor ourselves on how well we're accomplishing our goals and strategies.
Commissioner Silver, then Commissioner Webb.
My question, you said Nash County, what other counties have actually used this firm?
I was just going to respond from the side, actually Warren County is currently using this firm, so that's another neighbor, of course, who shares our western border, so they're going to be very familiar with our area and our challenges.
And I noticed you mentioned about the parks they would look at it?
Yes.
Okay, my question, County Commissioners, this is going to take, what, a year, two? How long did it take?
Usually a 12 to 15 months.
Okay, listen, I'll tell the people at home, listen, we need to do something before then. We've got a comprehensive plan dated 2002. If you read this plan, basically didn't follow it. If you look at the park plan dated to 2014, '24, it suggests that the western part of the county, which I live in, which is District 1, should have a park service. That's what I want to talk about now, not before this plan, because we've been kicking the can down the road, we can't kick it down the road another year or two. So we've got a plan to work with, we need to start working off this one until that one get done this year, not next year, two years from now. So that's just some of my concerns I have, as you can tell, I'm passionate about this, I'm passionate about being left behind, because that's what the people feel. My way, they've been left behind, and we need to end this budget cycle, you know. There's things that's really concerning me is the western part of the county, you looked at this other plan, you talked about developing other parts of the county, but we kept running, referring back to Run Rapids, Run Rapids everything. I want Run Rapids to prosper and grow, but I want the western part of Halifax County to grow and prosper too, and not sit here two years waiting for a survey and stuff. Most people dead and gone in this survey here, hadn't anything done. I mean, still, I've got a park up there. I went, let me say this one thing, I talked to one of my colleagues, they went to a park too, my, they were their grandkids. I went to the park, my, the closest one was closed, and then when I saw a reference to talking about 4-H, I think the 4-H area was a great place and a great hub and stuff. As I told somebody, it's like baseball, we can hit a home run, Run Rapids can be the home plate, but we hit that home run, hot weather, he's not going about the ballpark. Most time you got to run first, second, third baseman, that's Littleton, Hollister, Willwood, Meadock, and coming back around to Scotland Neck. Guys, we got to do something before we can wait for this plan. If we just work off the old plan for the next two years, it'll be a start, but we can't keep waiting. I was on a leadership class, keep going classes, training, seminar, I went to DC, I heard the same thing. Young beating the horse a little bit, but I went to this course at Wilson. You know, they talk about economic development starts with having a place to live, work. You've got to make people want to live here. If we keep getting plans and keeping on them, guys, we're going to still lose 1% of population, this county going to look like it is, this county is dying. Guys, it's up to us to put some life back in it.
Thank you, Commissioner Silver. We're going to hear from
I want to address that. Very good point, and I wanted to clarify something. There's nothing that says you have to wait on doing something about recreation in the western part of the county for the recreation plan to be updated. There's nothing that says, none of this is about waiting until you get the CDP done, or the recreation plan done, or even an update, or, you know, squaring away the planning ordinance with Chapter 160D. That's all long-range planning stuff. If you've got something you want to do now, you bring it up now and discuss it now.
That's right.
You know, that's a whole different conversation, because as you know, that's a conversation about where and how and how much. But that's not about what any of this is. None of this is, let's wait and see. Okay?
Uh, Commissioner Webb.
We have to do this.
That's right, that's right. Commissioner Webb?
Uh, Mr. Roundtree, what I like is, I like the fact that we're not going to have two separate plans like we have. I like the fact that the park and recreation plan is going to be a part of this plan, and I like that, because I think that the old plan mentions it, but doesn't go in much detail as far as park and recreation. I also heard you say that something about countywide recreation. Can you go a little bit more detail with that?
Oh, Christina.
Sure.
I wasn't part of the parks plan.
Well, and I might have to go back to Dia first, I wasn't on staff at that time. Let me say this about this, and Dia, please chime in whenever, but with the current recreation master plan, we may not have seen as much development as we have wanted, but we did, that plan did spur some development all across the county. Ms. Goldfacing could answer to the fact that we, that a playground was established at both the John 316 Center and the beautiful Littleton Park that I got to come to the ribbon cutting for several years ago. So it has spurred development throughout our municipalities out of that plan. Enfield got a park. After that plan, we got the inclusive playground in Scotland Neck. So fortunately, we're in a much better position than we were when that master plan came about. We are not bound to wait, as County Attorney Rollins said, on the plan to begin implementation, but I don't want people to think that that plan didn't sat on a shelf and did not live in burrito, which is what both of these plans now combined into one are intended to do. And Commissioner Webb, to your point, that was one thing that we wanted to do. We don't want to view recreation over here and our comp plan here. That's a vital component of the comprehensive development plan, and for Halifax County to grow as it should, quality of life and recreation for our residents is a key component, which is why we really wanted to dovetail those two plans together. Does that, does that help? Dia, do you want to say anything else?
I'll make one additional comment about the current master plan, and I don't want to disparage any of the work done by any of the people involved in the current master plan, because it was a very long process, I was here for it. But one thing that we hear over and over and over is to hire a recreation director. Okay, from an HR and personnel perspective, I am channeling Tony Brown. You don't want to fly the plane before it's built. You've got to build it before you fly it. Where's, where's my friend Sidney? Raise your hand. There's Sidney, okay. One thing we did in last year's budget was we added funding to what we have currently in this position, for this position to solely focus on recreation. This is a first step. That is her job. That is what she will do. She doesn't have the word director tied to her name because she doesn't have a department. She doesn't have other staff. Department heads, by virtue of being a director, have staff, they have departments, they have operating budgets. She doesn't have that. This is a meaningful step in that direction, and as Beth said earlier, she will work across the county to increase programming in all of the areas, from Hollister to Hobgood and up into Littleton and the lake. So this is where we are, and I think, I think there is disappointment among those that want to say that we don't have a director. We don't, but you have that component now, and this is where we are headed with the funding that we have to work with. And so these are things that you have to consider as we move forward with these plans, and if you want to buy more property for parks, we can do that, but just know that those come with cost, and not only after you purchase it, you have to maintain it. And who's going to look after it? We probably need staff for that. So I want to, I don't want, I feel like staff is being on the defense at this point for the work that has been done, but it's been meaningful and well thought out to this point, and this is the next step. And I think if we can get past hiring, Stewart engineering, which is what staff's recommendation is, let them bring back a plan, and not the plan, but how they will work to bring about a new CDP, and show you the community meetings that you'll have and the input that everybody will have for it.
You know, I don't like to do this, but we're going to take a break, and we're going to be back at 1:10, five-minute restroom break. I see some of the Commissioners looking at me kind of funny, they want to do that, so let's take a five-minute, no, 1:10, and we're going to start back.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
That's right. That's right.
No, you can have it.
When I first became a county commissioner. And I'm not saying all of it happened because of me, but because of me and my, and the colleagues and the staff, it improved. It was bad, y'all. We couldn't even give our employees raises. We couldn't do it. And, uh, and that's bad. And see, you have to think about that, too. You know, um, and, you know, and the thing about it is when you talk about retaining your employees, and just like I said this morning, the greatest asset that we have. First of all, the, the biggest asset is, is this board. This board has got to be right for us. The next thing is this later has got to be right. And this is turnover here. And then everything else, the managers and supervisors on them will fall into place. But if this board is not right, and she's not right, and he's not right, the rest of them is not going to be right. You can do whatever you want to do. You look around at some boards in this county now, and y'all can name them, I'm not going to name them now, but y'all know what I'm talking about. They're all messed up. But it starts with leadership. And, uh, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not preaching, absolutely I'm preaching, because I'm fine about this thing, too. And, um, you know, I want our county to do better and move in a good direction. But you gotta be visionary. The Bible talks about vision, right Pastor? You know, if you don't have vision, you're going to perish. And we've got to have some vision. And sometimes you have to take baby steps. And taking baby steps, hold this board accountable, hold these folks accountable, and move in a direction that you need to move in. But don't be crazy about it. And try to make it pop the thing and do it overnight. Now, I'm not going to vote for anything like that. I'm going to tell you straight up, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to break this calendar because we're in desperate need of things right now. Not going to do it. And, uh, whatever this board decides, certainly I'm going to respect it and I'm going to carry out the wishes as your chairman, but that doesn't mean I got to vote for it. And that, that may end up out there talking in the streets about it because y'all know I don't run like that. Whatever this board says, we're going to do. But I'm just begging y'all, please, y'all. You bring us some good ideas, but be strategic about it and really think about it before you do it. Uh, anyway, I could say a whole lot more, but I'm going to be quiet at this point. Beth, you have something you want to say?
I do, sorry. I will encourage this board to start some of those baby steps. In the meantime, until you determine where your path goes forward, we do have an opportunity here, but we need your assistance in your communities. You know, Cynthia's here, she is ready to serve. As David asked me this morning about setting up meetings, we're willing, we're able, we have the background, we have the resources to get into your communities and start those recreation programs. Uh, and it can be what your community wants it to be. So we're asking, in the meantime, take that baby step, help us and get into the communities and help us provide the services that you're talking about right here. Because until there's a park or some recreation program, we want to fill the gaps for the opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
If you can speak, I would like to speak. People that have-
Hold Miss Silver.
No, you're okay.
Ho- ho- hold Miss Silver. Now, uh, is, you know, she's a, she's a, she's a county employee, and that's why she could speak. But, you know, this is not a, a public meeting, so, um, I'm going to let you, I'm willing I don't do this, but I'm going to let you talk for a minute, and you can stand up and say what you want to say. But one minute, do you have something to add?
I appreciate one minute, Beth.
Okay.
People that have things can say we don't need things. When I grew up in Hollister, we had nothing to do during the summer. Absolutely nothing. Fifty-six years later, the kids in Hollister had absolutely nothing to do. We have no parks, we have no recreation basketball, we have nothing. And nobody in this county gives a flip. Uh, people in Reddick Rapids have these things for their kids and great kids, but we have nothing for this, all of them say.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Um, now, you know, another thing, too, you know, I know we keep making references, and I got to say this, we keep making references to Rock Rapids. And, um, you know, of course, I live in Rock Rapids, but, you know, I'm a county commissioner who represents the whole county. And, you know, in order for us to be a good county, a great county, you know, we've got to stop that mentality of saying, you know, this part of the county don't have, this part of the county. We've got to do what's best for the whole county, y'all. We've got to do that. From, from, from Leighton to Hopgood and all the towns in between. And I'm going to tell you, if you don't do what I just said, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to do what's best for the entire county. But if you don't do what I just said, you're doing a great disservice to this county. Commissioner Redding?
We also want to point out that other parts of the county feel voiceless when, uh, we speak up about Rock Rapids. I have students who attend the Rock Rapids School System, and they are a great joy to teach. And I look forward to reading and grading their papers. But I also have children who I teach from other parts of the county who don't have a voice, who, as Ms. Silver just said, don't have any recreation, won't, uh, go anywhere this summer. And it's, again, sad that I have, a, a parent has to take their child to a hotel, or to Virginia Beach, or Myrtle Beach, just to swim. When we could have a county recreation director and a department that establishes recreational programs and a recreational center, a countywide recreational center, that offers these o- opportunities, and potentially is able to put a, a pool maybe in Hollister, maybe in Scotlandex. So these kids have an opportunity to swim, to socialize, to stay physically fit, and so on and so forth.
I'm not trying to discredit what Ms. Silver said or even what you're saying about that. You know, I'm not trying to say that's not true. The simple thing that I'm saying, and don't miss this point, is if we're going to have a better Halifax County, it's got to be the whole county. We can't, we can't leave in about out. And, uh, and I'm, and I know that other areas in the county, you know, if you recall in my previous remarks, I said that. Other areas in the county like where, you know, like where you live, downtown Telleran, and Halifax, and Hopgood, and Ringwood. You know, they've been lacking for years. Certainly, they need things. But I'm just saying, you know, we don't need to forget any part of the county. You know, we need to make sure that the whole county is included, that we're going to be a greater Halifax County. And I'm going to put that, as long as I'm chair of the county commissioners, all of the county, not just part of it. Okay. Chris, you got anything else you want to say?
I'm here.
Okay. You sure you're good?
I think, I think Chris just wants to go back to planning and-
Are you at a point, are we at a point for a motion to-
Yes, sir. This is the board's pleasure, uh, Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the-
I'll second it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion, motion made by, uh, Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Silver. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that that decision is unanimous. Chris, you don't even have to make a statement this morning. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate you and all that you do. All right. It's ringing out there. Okay, item G, um, resolution to participate in creating an outdoor recreation economics core program. We'll hear from Ms. Wells.
Good afternoon. All right. Fly through this information pretty quickly. And I'm working off a, a PowerPoint from, uh, the North Carolina Department of Commerce. I didn't put this together, and I'm just going to hit some highlights. But what I have before you today, I can say two good things. One, not asking for any fees. Two, not asking for any money. So this is for, so we put that before you, this before you heard. Sorry, moving down. Okay. So the North Carolina Department of Commerce, um, received funding from a U.S. Economic Development Administration State Tourism Grant back in 2023. And the goal of that grant was to help rural North Carolina communities plan for, um, creating capital recreation economies, meaning, something that we've all just been talking about, this is how this dovetails very nicely. Um, leveraging our natural amenities to attract and enable businesses to start. For example, we are so blessed with the Reddick River. We don't have a canoe or kayak that helps with it, which has always been strange to me as someone who used to be on serve on Reddick River. That's an example of what we're trying to do. I just wanted to mention that. Okay, you'll see on the map, um, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has been working with these communities, and you'll see that they already, um, helped the town of Scotlandex do one of these strategic plans for Core, which is called the Core. Um, and, um, you'll see that our neighbors in Nashville and Sharpburg also participated, as well as Warrenton and Warren County itself. So we're looking to be joining that group if we so choose. Defining outdoor recreational, oh, this was an interesting slide. Again, I'm not trying to belabor the point, but, um, Beth and I were just talking, oh, Beth's talking. I'm referring to no one. Beth and I were talking on the break about how people define recreation. Well, for purposes of this particular plan with the Department of Commerce, we're talking about outdoor recreation that leverages their natural assets, not building anything. So we're talking about all recreational activities undertaken for pleasure that occur outdoors, going to the beach, going to the, going to the river. Um, and then I'm going to refer to the natural amenity-based recreation. Is recreation dependent on a particular natural and cultural environment, like fishing in the river, kayak, and a lake? Again, well blessed here in Halifax County with natural, um, resources. And then user-oriented recreation would be recreation that can be provided in any location given the provided space. But this golf, out of the Forestry Life Center. So these are activities that you would commonly see in an outdoor recreation economy. I don't need to read those. You can see them, and you can see that most of those are already enjoyed here in Halifax County. And that we are fortunately very blessed with trail systems and, um, as I said, border resources. Um, horseback riding, we have a 4H center. We have eleven resources already for these type of activities. Stats, sixteen point one billion in total outdoor recreation value added economic impact. That's excellent. Um, hundred and forty-five thousand direct jobs. And seven point seven billion in wages and compensation related to this type of endeavor. So it's a huge economic driver for our state and certainly for our county. I did like the primary goal of Core. How do we help each individual community capture their fair share of the slice of the pie? I like that idea. And help grow the overall sector of North Carolina. I think that statement harkens to lots of what Commissioners Redding, Webb, Silver, and all others have discussed at this point in time. Okay. What is the outdoor recreation economy? Again, consumer spending on things like guides, outfits, equipment. It fuels deployments, spending in other sectors like manufacturing, resale, transportation, food service, tourism, travel, and more. Again, those intangible benefits that we've all been looking at, improve physical and mental health, attracting workforce talent and economic investment. That's all part of this creating an outdoor recreation economy. Go to Beth. Primary focus, um, areas for creating an outdoor recreation economy? Looking at infrastructure development, trails, facilities, amenities. Tourism and hospitality, small business development, entrepreneurship, quality of life improvements, including health and workforce talent recruitment, manufacturing and supply chain, and serving as a catalyst. That's a great thing. All these components, as we just talked about with the CDP. Everything's interconnected. If you improve one segment, it might help you improve all segments. An outdoor recreation economy focuses on an ecosystem approach. Kind of that rising tide raises all ships in a calendar where each component helps strengthen the system. Again, what you guys have been talking about as a board today, not knowing this was coming, unless I did your due diligence and read all this. Um, the planning and program implementation process. So the Main Street and, um, Rural Planning Centers Rural Planning Program facilitates all the strategic planning. Again, as I said, free of charge. They will establish a local work group. So that would involve you, it would involve all our municipalities, it would involve 4H, it would involve our Parks and Drink Advisory Board and the Halifax County Horse Council, I see duty, um, and others. Would all dovetail to talk about analyzing what we have, what we need, where we want to go. Why do we want to start this process now? Because it dovetails very nicely with our CDP. Because we're having all these kind of same community meetings. So right now, we can just use the free help of the North Carolina, um, Department of Commerce to help us get, um, a little bit further down that road. Okay, and then the process. Um, that's Scott, the copy of Scotlandex Plan, which you can see is 2023 to 2028. So it creates a five-year plan. So whereas the CDP is going to be a longer-range vision, this will be a shorter-range vision of strategies, goals, objectives, and actions. What we can get implemented or started to implement in the next five years. And again, the whole goal is increasing, um, economic vitality through leveraging outdoor recreation. Exciting things. I'm going to thank my last one. You like the noises? Um, as you know, we're part of the Reddick River State Trail, which is one of the first river state trails in North Carolina. And, uh, we're blessed to be a part of that. But again, the whole question is, how can we leverage our natural essence to increase this economic opportunity? So with that said, what I put for, for, for you today, I gave you a few things, I gave you the presentation. Um, all I would need you to take action on today is to approve the resolution that is attached. I'll read that if necessary, if not, it's in your pockets, um, to allow Halifax County to participate in Core. And then there's an MOU that you don't need to do anything with. It just lets you know what the Department of Commerce's responsibilities would be, what our responsibilities would be. And again, asserting that no money is exchanged between the two. But once we do approve this resolution, they're ready to get started immediately. Because this program is going to kind of end toward the end of calendar year 2024. So I put that for you today.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments about her present, correct?
So you said the program will end basically this year, December?
Correct. So once we start, once we approve this resolution and sign the MOU, the North Carolina Department of Commerce is ready to jump in. We'll start talking with our staff. Management will be involved, of course, recreation will be involved, all municipalities will be involved. And we'll start engaging, setting up community meetings, and begin that process. So they can produce a plan for us, again, quickly.
So will this, this plan will be incorporated into the comprehensive?
It will probably be a separate piece. It's not, you know, the comprehensive development plan doesn't necessarily focus on the outdoor recreation economy. This is kind of more of a, I don't want to, thank you, that's a great word, a specialized plan. Again, so- Again, yeah.
I see it now, when you said outdoor, okay.
Yeah, this is very specific. Um, and again, the focus, you know, just coming from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and of course Kathy has been involved in these, these core, um, meetings when we expressed our interest as well. It's really about leveraging what we have to get us farther down the road with what you're talking about, workforce development, building businesses, securing an outfit of the river, things like that.
Okay. Do you all want her to read the resolution?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Silver?
I'm just like my voice.
I don't want to read the resolution, and I was going to make a motion, but I was going to ask you, is that include just the rivers? Or is that including like bike trails or?
They don't look at everything that is an outdoor amenity in Halifax County.
Because it'd be nice to have something like that connecting to other parts of the county, like meet up, you know, people to do canoes and bikes. And they have that, a lot of it. Yeah, a lot of it in Virginia, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, but I think you may have some more questions.
Okay, anyone else? All right, you can go ahead, Commissioner Silver.
Um, um, just make a motion that we move forward this resolution and start and work on this project.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Silver, they're second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And that was the only thing you mean was resolution, right?
It was, but let me, kudos. But look, y'all just took your first step down the path. You're already handling your business. That's all I have is that, you're handling your business.
Okay, I think, I think you're still up, then.
I am.
Other items, item H, 2425 Recreation Partners Program Funding Recommendation.
That's right. So I want to first thank several of our staff members and two of our commissioners, Commissioners Redding and Silver, uh, worked with us on the Recreation Partners Program Grant selection this year. Um, and we also have, of course, County Manager Jeff Denton, County Attorney Rollins, myself, Thomas Silver, and Mary Duncan. So we all worked together, went through fourteen very good applications for some very interesting programming. Um, thankfully, they will echo what I'm saying in that we're serving the entirety of Halifax County. Some are a little bit more specialized in whom they're serving, but we truly have programs all across the county that anyone can take advantage of. Okay. So, um, if you will look at the charts that I've attached to your item, I'm just going to walk through. I don't have a little summaries of each of these programs because I'm trying not to belabor the point. But we received fourteen applications. You will see the agencies on the left. You'll see the projects that they proposed, they're in the middle. And I just, we had several more categories of items that we were considering, but I just included two for you. One was whether they were submitted by the due date. They were due on March fourteenth. Um, unfortunately, we had one that was not. And the second factor was whether they were a nonprofit corporation and were a faith-based organization. And we had one that was not. So when I tell you that those two projects were not funded, I wanted to shake your wire right off the bat. No question as to the validity of the project, but if they were not received on time or the entity that applied for the funding was not a nonprofit or a faith, they were a faith-based organization, we, we get not funded. Okay. So, um, you will see that no, very few of them got fully funded because we had thirty thousand dollars, and we were doing the best that we could to spread that money of sugar love all across the county and all across the programs. I'm not going to go through each of these, but you will see that we were able to approve with the thirty thousand dollars in funding eleven different projects. Again, two did not qualify, and there was one from the Halifax County Horse Yaw. That instead of going through grant funding, since the county owns the Forestry Life Center and the trails, we're just going to put those signs in our operations budget. So you should get in front of it just through a different method. So, um, that was a great, excellent, a great idea by County Manager to get that, oh, we'll just pull that into the, the county's budget and make that work. So you can see the requested amounts, and you will see the awarded amounts. Um, so we whittled sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars of direct mandate of requests down to the thirty thousand dollars budget that we have. And, uh, we have to turn it over to, especially, um, Commissioners Silver and Redding. They don't want to say anything or any of the other committee members, but we're really pleased with what we have, the diversity in geography and the diversity of triggers and factors.
Can I speak to something, um, that we had in our committee discussion? And Christine, I'll ask you to detail it. But there are a couple of these projects that are fairly new.
Yes.
And, um, the proposal to fund them is going to be contingent on them demonstrating to us that they've got the rest of their budget funding that they proposed to have. Could you speak to that, so the board want to?
Yes. There were a couple of the projects, um, on the list that really are what I would say are nonprofits in their infancy. Um, and we don't want to, um, discourage them in any way. In fact, we want to encourage them to not only come to the county for funding, which is wonderful, but to also understand, you know, we may not be able to give you fifteen thousand dollars to fund your entire project, but we can give you some seed money and agree to fund that portion of your project if you're able to go out and secure other funding, whether that's from another municipality, other nonprofits, and agreements. Does that satisfy that plan?
Well, I, I, I don't recall which two they were, so.
If you want me to say, it's the last two of the sheet.
Thank you, could you let the board know that, so?
Tipping Point and the YG.
Where are the last two located?
Um, Tipping Point is actually going to be based on Scotlandex. Um, I think they're going to primarily focus on serving Scotlandex residents, but, you know, I'll obviously welcome anyone from the county. And we got game, that one's located in Reddick Rapids, but, um, he's planning to teach golf skills. Um, one thing we weren't sure about is what golf course they're going to use. Obviously, in Halifax County, we have to.
He's, he's, he's looking for a site.
Okay.
So again, as County Attorney Rollins pointed out, we're going to give up funding contingent on their abilities to secure other projects.
Look like me, y'all did a great job. It's a great cross-section of the entire county, but anyway. Yes, sir.
I just want to say it was the first time participating. It was a good experience, and, um, they, they were really good to District One. I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't do more for the Hollister area and the Ringwood area, but we didn't have anybody really put in that qualified. So we can't blame the county, it was the lack there. So anybody that listens, District One, please apply next year for that area. But I think they were still generous to the Leighton area and infield area, so that still makes me happy. Just thank the staff and my colleague over there, an attorney that keeps us out of trouble. Yeah.
And that's another good point for, for those who perhaps don't have an established nonprofit. Of course, we encourage you to establish a nonprofit or if you can dovetail your project or program with an existing nonprofit in order to enable us to fund you to serve your area.
But also, too, you got to look at, you got to have a good cross-section of the county, too. You can't focus in just one place. And I think this is a good cross-section of the county. Okay, based on that, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Redding?
I just wanted to add, uh, I want to thank Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Denton for lead, leading a very collaborative, uh, grant proposal discussion that I think led to not only a productive, uh, gathering, but also the funding of some projects that are really going to empower a lot of youth across the county, so, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner, um, Silver for serving on that as well. Okay, any, any other questions or comments? I like a motion for the approval, basically, this is your pleasure. Silver? Motion made by Commissioner Silver, they're second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, um, Davis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Great job, but thank, thank the staff, too, for serving. All right, I don't believe you. Okay, next item, Capital Reserve Fund Report. Uh, we'll hear from our attorney, Dan Rollins.
Well, I had the pleasure of not asking you to spend money, but telling you how much money you've got in something. So this is going to be great. Um, just to give, um, some of the new board members some background, we decided to establish a capital reserve fund back in two thousand twenty-two, I believe.
It was your idea, too, by the way.
I had pounded the table for it for years, and Tony Brown finally listened to me and got us to come do that.
It was coming in twenty twenty-two.
He was, he-
I was here.
Yeah, but, yeah, but nonetheless, in any case, we did that. And the good thing about a capital reserve fund is that it allows you a process of planning for your, um, your major capital needs by putting away money and designating it for a particular purpose. Um, the, the good thing is it's very flexible. The other good thing is that once you make an appropriation to the capital reserve fund, you can't pull that money out and use it for anything other than capital outlay purposes, which is a great planning tool. In any case, the first thing I wanted to take a look at is something Mary prepared, uh, called History of Capital Reserve, because I think you're going to like what you see there. Um, and you'll see she's got three, three years that we've been in, actually, two and a half years we've been in, had this in place. Um, and, and I'm looking at now fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, And I'm looking at now fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and so far, we're halfway through that fiscal year as of December thirty-first. The money that you have, that we've had set aside in capital reserve in just that past six months has earned interest of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, which is phenomenal, because that gets to be spread about the other, the projects that you've decided you want to have capital reserve funds for. So right now, the total amount of money in capital reserve is eight million, four eighty-three, nine sixty-two, forty. Any question about Mary's information here about how well this fund has done while we've been holding this money? Because I want to go to the next handout about how you have designated that money to be held and for what purposes. So any question about how much we have or why we have that much?
Is this strictly?
It's just the capital fund's almost like a savings account.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad analogy, except that you can't take the money out of the safe account and do just whatever you please.
It's a CD.
Even better. Okay. So the other handout is a one pager, and I apologize for the tiny print, but I just wanted to get it all on one page. And this is the Capital Reserve Fund Report as of December thirty-first. And you'll see a column there. The first column says capital projects slash purpose. This is because when you set aside money and appropriate money to the capital reserve fund, you have to say what you're appropriating it for, what purpose or what project. It might be a specific project. It might be for a more general purpose. The purposes or projects that you can set aside capital reserve for are those, the same ones that you can borrow money for. So it's not just anything. It has to be, and there's a particular list of them in the statute about bond financing, that sort of thing. So it has to be one of those things. You've got one, two, three, four, five, six projects or purposes that you so far have decided to reserve funds for. And you can see they're listed there, courthouse renovations, and the more important, that column is important, but I'm going to go down that. But the other column that's important is the fourth column that says total, because that gives you how much you now have set aside for a particular purpose or project. The deal is going to come back to this one about courthouse renovations, maybe, or maybe not. But right now, in capital reserve, we have, okay, good. Well, we have four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five twenty-one for courthouse renovations in capital reserve. That doesn't mean you've appropriated to a project. We've just, we're just holding that. And for me, more importantly, is the last set of purpose for public buildings general. That's at the bottom of this page. We have a total at this point of one million, fifteen thousand, five, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars that we have put in capital reserve for just building projects in general. That could be the jail. That could be a storage building. It could be anything that's a capital project that you haven't specifically designated, but you haven't set aside for that purpose. So again, you see the total in capital reserve is the same number I just gave you, eight million, four eighty-three, nine sixty-two. The other thing I will tell you about the capital reserve fund is that when you put money aside, you have to say by what date you're going to spend it. And for most of these, we've got that about twenty years out, about, yeah, about ten years. I apologize. You also need to be aware that you can change this, you can change where you want the money to be reserved for. You don't have to keep these purposes. At some point, you might decide that you don't want to hold money aside for school facilities, and you can move it to another capital project. So you aren't locked in to these purposes, but you do have to designate a purpose when you make an appropriation. Keep in mind, you can change it later. So we're pretty happy we did a capital reserve fund. It's done well. It has, I don't know what you've got disinvested in Mary, but I told her I wanted for my 401K. But in any case, it's done very well. And if you have questions about the capital reserve fund, this may come up from time to time and say we have projects that need additional funding. But I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments, Commissioner Silver?
Attorney Rollins, I see you got like total, and you got the maximum amount. So what happened was move those funds when we're seeing it out until the?
What, the way, if you decide to actually spend the funds, what you do is you will adopt two things. You'll adopt the resolution that directs the county to remove, let's say, for example, let's say you're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on some school project. You'd adopt the resolution that appropriates five hundred thousand dollars from capital reserve to project school, I'll call it. Okay? And then the other thing you do, what you're used to doing, is you develop a capital project ordinance that will show revenue into that of five hundred thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund. That will reduce the amount of money in capital reserve. So the next time you get the report, if you've made an appropriation out of capital reserve, then that eight point four million will be something less, unless there's been some interest in the meantime that made it up.
My question, just like the courthouse is, has four hundred and twenty-seven thousand in it, but the maximum amount is fourteen. What would that seventeen thousand, would that be moved out of there?
No, no, the maximum amount, that's the maximum amount of principal that you're willing to set aside. So you've only set aside four hundred thousand dollars in principal for courthouse renovations. You see the column that says principal. You haven't appropriated any new money to courthouse renovations, but you allow the interest to accrue to however large it goes. So I mean, that four hundred and twenty-seven thousand by next summer will go up again. The four hundred and ten thousand maximum amount just means a maximum of new money that you're appropriating for that purpose.
Thank you. Your deal, somebody did a good job, picked up an account and put it in.
I got one quick one, just for information.
Yes, sir.
So what does it take to create an item in this capital reserve?
Just a resolution by the board to create, if you've got some new item or specific project you want to appropriate money to, you can change this, and by resolution, you know, say, we're going to put two million dollars on, I don't know what your project is.
I just think there's a lot of people here probably would love to see a recreation land item on here at some point.
And recreation is not on here, but I need, I'm pretty sure as a capital project, if you're going to build something.
Yeah. Or buy, even buy, purchase a piece of land or build something, right?
Then that's a change we could make. Yep.
I think that's something for discussion down the road.
I understand.
Slowly down the road. Just around the corner, how about that?
Just around the corner. Many of it, the point is you do have that flexibility, and I want all of you to be aware of that. So that's the capital reserve fund report. We normally do this once a year, but we thought this year with new board members and with budget discussions coming up at your next meeting, you might want to know, you know, where the reserve was.
Thank you, Attorney Rollins. No action is needed on that.
No, sir.
But I do appreciate you bringing that in. Appreciate your idea of bringing it up in the beginning. Okay. Move to the next item, which is item five, board appointments. I think we have a minute for that. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council receives nominations to appoint Sidney Parham to replace Beth Virchell, and I believe Sidney is new running the new four H agents. Can I get a motion for that? Motion made by Vice Chair Davis, the second. Second by Commissioner Redding. In further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose, like sign. Okay. Economic Development, Ms. Scott. I think that's all of the board appointments. Okay.
No, it's just a short board appointment. I know y'all are so excited to get here all day long for the report, but hopefully you had the report in your packets and had a chance to look at it. Commissioner Redding, I did want to address one point you made about Edge Home, Nashville, Wilson, because we compete with Edge Home, Nashville, Wilson for a lot of projects. And I particularly wanted to bring to your attention a couple of points. So in the last, in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, in the Rocky Mountain area, they lost over twenty-one hundred jobs as a result of the closing of the QVC distribution center and Pfizer layoffs and some other projects. In Wilson, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, they lost over seven hundred and forty jobs, closing of Sandos, Playstore, and a long-time trucking company that had been there in Wilson. So for the Amazon project, you know, we did submit site for Amazon, but when they looked at the job availability, there was no way that they could go any other place in North Carolina and get the same kind of jobs already available, or people that had experienced some of those jobs. So that's a piece of the puzzle in economic development that fits together really well sometimes. It works for us too. So in that, Commissioner Silver and I, we were in a class together, the Duke Leadership Forum last week. We hear about the growth that Wilson and Marshall County are starting to feel. And it's the same growth that Johnson County has experienced over the years being close to Raleigh. And so with Wilson and Marshall quite soon in Raleigh, Nashville's twenty minutes, so they're going to feel the growth as Raleigh grows, and it's just going to take us longer to feel that growth. But I wanted to make those points because I think they're really relative to what you are seeing, and the comprehensive plan is tremendously needed, and we will all benefit from it.
One point that I wanted to respond with is, yes, places lose jobs, but they're also prepared to bring new jobs, and that's where I think we have to be, you know, headed in that direction because.
Are you familiar with Safelite?
Yep. A lot of my classmates' parents worked there.
And so, you know, we worked very hard to retain Safelite at the time that they were looking, you know, to close their last manufacturing. So what we did do is work the commons and for them to locate one of their major logistics partners at that facility and to facilitate the purchase of that facility. So that is being ready and working to try to support additional jobs at, you know, as a result of closing. So I think most of y'all were here at that time, as far as commissioners did remember that, and, you know, and that's what we have to do, have to be resilient and be ready to support our community in the process of that.
And I just want us to be ready for hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs that bring living wages here. And the Safelite facility, as you were saying, was a great opportunity for us to locate a portion of commons there. But I think we can also be ready for a bigger operation that can help people not only make living wages, but own homes, support their children, paying for college, providing them, you know, opportunities.
For examples, right across the street from the College West one, they're adding a third shift, their employment's making over two hundred, they're assuming, and they are paying really good wages in our community. And so, you know, having companies like that supporting them is just important.
Absolutely.
And another thing too, Kath, when you talk about that, you also got to think about retaining these employers here. You know, you have to, you know, you have to do things, not just recruit and bring folks here, but once you get them here, you have, it's like we had that tour for almost half a day over at Roseburg not too long ago, you know, to talk with them about concerns and things that are going on, and them giving us updates. So it's important that you keep what you have too, especially when they're real good ones.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So anyway, so just let's see, get this moving, and I'll try to get it quickly because I know. Economic indicators, our unemployment rate, five point three percent. It was five point seven percent January twenty twenty-four. That represents nine hundred and seventy-six unemployed individuals in our county compared to a thousand forty a year ago. Building permits were at one point six million compared to five point four million at the same period February last year. And our retail sales were just over sixty-nine million compared to sixty-eight million in January. And this data's behind, so we'll be getting the new unemployment figures around the end part of this month. But the, there's nine hundred and eighty advertised job openings in March of two thousand twenty-five. I did include some information this month for you. I hope you had a chance to look at it about single family housing construction. So there are new homes being built. These are not mobile homes. These are not, these are state homes or modular homes that are, have been built over the years. So I went back and looked at five years, or we keep up with it each year. And you see two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, there really was kind of some growth in new housing construction in the county. And then that kind of backed off in two thousand twenty-four. And, you know, you would assume construction prices and interest rates are probably a reason for it backing down a little bit, because you can see the average value of those homes in our county. So we do an economic snapshot each year. We look back at the previous year. The data is somewhat hard to get it all to materialize at the same time, so it's usually the end of April before we can get all the figures together. And in your package, I won't go through all of this, but as we look at comparing ourselves, you know, what is there at the interstate is a big part of what brings in those retail sales into Halifax County. And so we try to look at how we compare on year over year, some of these major retail locations like Starbucks. How does our Starbucks do? So if you look at our Starbucks, it outperformed Starbucks in Rocky Mountain, in Fourier, Wilson, Nashville doesn't have one, so, and other entities like ABCs and Cracker Barrel that outperform. And then, I'm sorry, I saw you pointing.
No, I didn't realize that you did. Of course, we get a Chick-fil-A.
Yes, they have a Chick-fil-A.
Oh, it's already there?
Yeah. Chick-fil-A and Starbucks. And we're starting to see some change in our numbers because of they have a casino, they have a Chick-fil-A, they have Starbucks. So many of people who would normally stop for us stopped there, but that's not my area of, so.
Go through the draft, you Chick-fil-A at one, twelve o'clock, and you can't tell they missing nobody.
But anyway, and another comparison that's quite interesting, and look back at this, and you'll see some things that will interest you. Our Walmart, you see the star emblem there. You look at how we compare to these larger areas, our Walmart has equal to or greater visitors for the most part. Wilson is a little bit. And then the shopping center, if you look at the Premier Landing Shopping Center and the Golden East Shopping Center in Rocky Mountain, you see the difference, it's double. And all this is based on cell phone data, so there's some margin for error, but it's pretty right off because we're able to look at some things that we use this data for and more or less verify its accuracy. So really good. Anyway, I'm not going to hit everything, like Ascent Association, you heard enough about them today. PCE legislative breakfast, our association met with our legislators, we had breakfast with them a couple of weeks ago to talk about product development, site readiness, because if we want to be ready for those thousand job entities, we got to have the products to locate them. So really important to advocate for opportunities from our General Assembly. And our select site that we have is being enhanced because of these initiatives. The Royal Center, I attended over six hundred attendees. Really proud of the Halifax Community College Higher Job Fair or Career and Service Fair. We co-sponsored that with Halifax Community College. Great event. It was the best vibe that I have ever experienced for a job fair. And having it in that small location gave everybody an opportunity to be more connected from the businesses to the job seekers. Ms. Barbara Plon, who's my partner, did this job fair. She did a great job and is a great colleague to work with. But this job fair particularly introduced Halifax County's businesses to potential job seekers that are there at college. And then the students at the college got an opportunity to interact with the employers. So really good opportunity. I attended a meeting with the Halifax County Schools regarding their PPE program and just, you know, what they've done with the culinary arts is amazing and building a facility that's specifically for that, and their goal is school to work programs next fall. And then I just read that some of the funding that is being pulled back on the federal side is going to affect you, so that's my, that's my. We did a plant tour with Roseburg with Senator Tillis's staff. Really important to help raise the profile of that industry to his staff. Then we did Senator Chenba's office, wanted to do a tour. They had their legislative liaison in the area and wanted to visit Resor's. And Resor's is our largest employer in the county, so it was really good to go in to see, you know, how much Resor contributes to our economy. I mentioned the Duke Leadership Forum. That's a hard place to be on a Friday, I'm telling you. It's really hard. But it really is helping to focus on what our workforce needs are for the future and really, it's a tremendously important issue for us to look at from an economic competitiveness standpoint. So it's turning out to be a good thing, but it's just really difficult. And then, you know, elected officials reception and governmental association, just important platforms to be able to collaborate with our city and county leaders, attend the Minority Rapids Strategic Planning Session, and the Center for Energy Education, Solar for Public Officials. I needed a refresher on that, so I got one. And then hopefully you all get our newsletter and able to see some of the things that we're doing. If you're not getting it, let me know. Sometimes constant contact is a little bit of a problem for internet, but there's a lot of great projects going on in our community. We have investors who purchased buildings and welded to up it for tenants. You know, we've got Commons who has a new minority business contractor they're working with, Walker S. E. O., one of the largest minority business logistics companies in the world. And then our hotel's almost complete, four days open. Hopefully, we can get there. Infrastructure, you know, part of this comprehensive development plan, you know, we've been talking about, you know, Mayor Boulevard, Water and Sewer, we've got the exit one fifty-four sewer project, Erebus needs a new road so it doesn't go through residential neighborhoods. These are all things that the comprehensive development plan can put in place that we can, as you're talking about, check off and look at each year. But we're still trying to do the new program. It just takes a lot of. It just takes a lot of money, and that's, that's where we are. My activity in March was really good. We kissed a lot of toes last month, so I tell people, that's what I do, I kiss a lot of toes. And every once in a while we find a prince, but there's some friends that did visit and hopefully we can leave you all. Our Economic Development Roadshow is set for May twenty-first. We do this each year as kind of a familiarization tour for their industry, which today this has been Chairman Blount. Hopefully you all will be able to attend, take about three or four hours out of your day, go visit a plant, do a plant tour, get to learn about that industry, visit some other places in the community that are tremendous assets for economic development. Just a really good opportunity for a little invitation. I'm not going to do it next month and the month after, but thank you all so much. Something I did want to mention, our infrastructure projects, purchasing materials, our projects as a part of the bill that you agreed into the council. And we appreciate that. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I got one, Kath. On the HCC Career Service Fair, you had a lot of people attend. Do you ever get a report back, if any people get hired after that day?
Yeah, and we have a follow-up meeting scheduled for next week, so I'll be able to get y'all some details on that. But generally, for a job fair, we do get that kind of information.
Yeah, no.
And job fairs have not been relatively busy lately. That's why I was so glad to see this particular one, because, you know, the vibe was just like, you know, the banded students, you had a collective audience there on campus, you could bring them in.
The other thing I was just going to say, in this leadership forum, like, I think you said some of the jobs were, were vacant, or like nursing jobs or whatever, from the, at the hospital, I think you was talking about.
And there are a lot of jobs available at the hospital.
Okay, a lot of jobs, yeah.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, but I was just saying that, I was speaking with the purpose of making contacts important to that. But the dean for Barton College, Nash County and other colleges, they have, Elder County, excuse me, they have a partnership, if the person come back and work at the hospital, that they basically don't have to pay that tuition for the, they go to the community college for two years, they can end up with a four-year degree, possibly not owing any money. And I asked the dean about this, I said, is that something Halifax County can do? He said, certainly, give it to your commissioners, the hospital staff. And if they work two years, somehow they have a partnership to work it out way, but that way that person don't owe any money. I think that's something we need to look at, maybe the dean to possibly look at doing.
And Dr. Elliot Sitz on the little advisory, I was trying to mention that too. I know they have that LPM program that makes it really easy for students to get their, you know, go from a C N to a L or register to a LPM. And as far as hospital, I'm not sure that's free, that would be a tremendous benefit.
Dr. Sisley with the Barton College, he said that they was doing it with Woodson, Nash County, and one of the surrounding counties, and they just had to stay to help out. And that means about twenty, thirty thousand dollars more possibly a year, a nurse from a two-year degree to a four-year degree, that's a lot of money.
And like you said, it's a big gap that our community has to fill jobs. And I thank y'all so much.
Oh, I think Mr. Redd has a question.
I just wanted to compliment Ms. Scott and Ms. Plum for an excellent career day. We had a broad spectrum of tables, including the military, Halifax County's government was there, the hospital.
We did have y'all together.
Yep. The hospital and other, DSS was there, Caledon, not Caledonia, One of River. And they were not only our adult students and adults who live here, but also early college students came to learn about jobs that day.
Well, it's really important for us as an economic developer organization, and I work for you all, but we, we have to be engaged with workforce development, really important.
Absolutely.
So every opportunity I get, I try to take advantage of it. But thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, appreciate all that you do. Okay, we'll hear from our hard-working county manager, Ms. Denton.
Good afternoon, again.
Good night, you guys.
Yeah, I already covered the update on the Court Services Building down the street. The other thing I was going to just give you an update on was we continue to watch some of the activities coming out, coming out of Washington with funding cuts and anything that may impact county operations. The county managers with NCC, we meet every week for an hour, it's virtual. And we're starting to watch some programs that may be impacted, so we'll keep you up to date on that, particularly some programs that are administered by DSS. And so, you know, we're having conversations now about if the funding stops, what, what do we do? And so, NCC is very engaged and has reached out to our, the national county parts at NACO to keep, keep some data on things that are happening and what the counties can be prepared for if anything is to come down. Additionally, you may have seen the news last week that some funding was terminated for four school systems in North Carolina. Halifax County School's been one of them. It was over eight hundred thousand dollars. It impacts some STEM labs at both high schools and a culinary lab at Southeast. I've talked to Dr. Cunningham a little bit about that to see if there's anything the county can do, if I can bring that to you all. We're still having some conversations about that, wanted to get a little bit more information, but he doesn't have that much at this point, so it'll be an ongoing conversation. But I know Chairman Blount may want to discuss that with you a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I do, you know, it's, it's really troubling to me that, that Halifax County Schools, Lenoah Schools, Robinson County, Richmond County Schools, they were targeted for that. And I used the word target, you know, that may not be the right word, but, you know, they're the only four school systems that I know in North Carolina, you know, that the, that the Fed's looking at cutting funding. I did talk with Dr. Cunningham over the weekend about it, and, and Ms. Denton is round target of what she said, and I can't tell you anymore about our conversation, other than, you know, he's, he was upset that, that that happened to the Halifax County Schools. You know, I would recommend to you all that, that we send a letter to our US senators and representatives asking them to restore this, you know, ASAP. And I know Ms. Denton probably can get with Halifax County Schools and put the details in there, you know, as far as, you know, the amount, the project, stuff like that, it don't have to be a whole lot, just kind of identify those things. And, and I talked with Dr. Cunningham about that, and he said he's, he would probably ask his school board to do the same. And at first, we had talked about doing a joint letter, and then, you know, then he and I kind of decided that may not be the best thing to do. Maybe we just need to do one coming from our board of county commissioners, and they do one coming from their school board. And so, so that's what, you know, I'm going to ask you all to do after we talk about it a little bit. Commissioner Redd?
And if possible, I think we should include some illustrations, maybe some pictures in the letter, so they can actually see the children who are in our county schools, you know, participating in culinary arts and other activities.
Right.
So it's just not on paper and writing, but they can see illustrations of them.
Yeah, and Ms. Denton can get with the public information officer with Halifax County Schools and probably make that happen.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
I was just going to say, John and Chad Barrett Office and Trey both said if you knew something like that was happening, losing funding, he said, let them know sooner than later. If it's a phone call, he said, let them know as soon as, basically, you can, so they can start it. He says, appeal process too.
Commissioner Silver to your point, we can do it both ways, we can let them, we can give a call and also follow up with a letter as well. So please, sir, do both.
I was planning to do that today.
Okay.
So I'll do phone calls and emails just to make sure, and then I'll craft a letter from the county, and I'll have it in your weekly update.
And I'll make a motion to the other front.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, motion, motion made by Commissioner Bryant, second by Commissioner Barrett. In the further discussion, Vice Chair Davis.
I was just going to follow up with Commissioner Silver, that I do know that John has shared that on Thursdays is when they have their weekly updates with the senator. So if we can, with it, get it in there so they can, let them know about it.
All right.
Okay, all right. Anything else in the discussion? Did you have something to say, Commissioner Redd?
No, not your dead issue.
Just turning pages.
Not your dead issue.
Okay. All those, if I, I oppose. Okay, Ms. Denton is going to make a phone call on Ms. Welswell one to those three offices and then follow up with a letter. Okay, all right, thank you all so much for doing that, I think that's really important. And I don't think Welden or One of Rapids, I don't, I don't think, we hadn't heard of that.
Not to our knowledge.
Right, not to our knowledge, so that's why we're just doing the Halifax County thing. Our county attorney, have you finished?
Yes, sir, we'll have a few items in closed session.
Okay. Attorney Lawrence. You don't have to do the per if you don't want to.
No, I haven't said that.
Yeah. While they're, while they're confirming, Ms. Scott, do you have anything to flow session? Okay. I believe Attorney Lawrence has, at least a matter.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay.
The reason for that is my, my ninety-four-year-old father went into the hospital Thursday night, and I haven't been here since Thursday evening, so, anyway, he's doing great, going home today.
Oh, that's good, all right, good news.
I just wanted to square something away before I got into what I was going to report about. First of all, what I wanted to say, what I wanted to ask you while I had your attention in, under my report, was in light of your earlier action on more money to Lake Gaston Weed Control Council, and then the response you got during the public comment, are there any further instructions you want to give to me or the rest of the staff about the additional funding that you approved for hydrola control? Because my takeaway from what was said by Mr. Zimmer was that they don't intend to spend anything for hydrola control on the Halifax County Shore. And so I'm, I'm at a corner about, okay, what do we do?
Okay, Attorney Lawrence and Commissioner, y'all can chime in if you want to, and I'm going to make it kind of short, really. What I had planned to do, and I had talked with one or two of them, I was thinking about talking with the county manager too. I'm going to appoint an ad hoc subcommittee to this board, consisting of three commissioners. And also, and the commissioners will be Commissioners Silver, Barrett, and Webb, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Webb to be the chair, and then on that committee will be Attorney Lawrence as well as the county manager. And the purpose of, you know, the purpose of the committee is, is to meet and, you know, meet here with, first with you all, and then, you know, meet, you know, Lake Gaston, just try to work out the differences and bring them back to the board. And, you know, we don't need to get into the weeds of the differences and all that, we don't have differences by now. We're in trouble. But anyway, that's, that's what I want to do, but I have to have your approval, you know, from this board in order to appoint that committee. So that's, that's the only other thing Attorney Lawrence, that, you know, that I had worked to do, and anyway, go ahead.
Okay, so right now I have action by the board to, for another additional forty-one thousand dollars in grant funding to Lake Gaston Weed Control. If you're going to, and I have no, I think you've got a right idea about appointing a subcommittee to discuss this and suggest some solutions, but for now, do you want to leave that prior action early in this meeting today to provide another forty-one thousand dollars for hydrola control on Lake Gaston? Or do you want to revisit that?
You know, y'all help me with this now.
I guess, so I believe a motion may be, correct me if I'm wrong, if they provide, it was a contingent in providing you with what you wanted, right?
Yes, sir.
So if they provide us with that, I think, I mean, for example, they can have the money.
I can proceed with an amended grant agreement, and I can do all that, I can keep doing that.
Yeah, I mean, if they, see, I mean, I think, if they provide that to us, then I think that's been in, like you said, I mean.
I just, I just pull back the curtain.
I can come up with a better solution than what we had this time.
Great, very good, very good.
Okay, all right, with what has been said, can I get a motion to approve that committee?
That committee is entirely up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I just wanted to make count it in the record, though, I know I can do it, but I just want to be in the record. And you're right about that, I know, you're giving it legal in of it, but, okay. Who made the motion? I didn't say. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Silver, second. Second by Commissioner Redd. In the further discussion, all those in favor, say aye, all opposed.
Yes, sir.
Ask my question to you, Attorney Lawrence, I just want to make sure that that previous seventy-five thousand we gave, now he said treating, we still going to get that amount for that seventy-five thousand, I kind of got a little confused.
Here's where, I'm going to go back to the memo I gave you all, and I'm going to commend you to read that if you can. Don't do it late at night, that's not going to help. But, but I'm going to commend that to you because here's the thing, when Mr. Webb made his motion today, and I confirmed this with somebody else who had ears in the room, he said an additional forty-one thousand dollars for the treatment of hydrola in Halifax County. Now, I'll be frank with you, your earlier motion for the seventy-five thousand didn't have that qualifier on it. But as I've said in my memo, my concern about any funding to Lake Gaston Weed Control Council for anything that's going to be done outside of Halifax County really ought to be pursuant to an actual inter-local agreement and not some handshake that happened twenty-five years ago. So that's part of what I'd like this subcommittee to discuss about reaching out to the other four counties. If y'all really want to do this, then let's do this. But, you know, this isn't the way to, to, to do things. So, you know, they could take our seventy-five thousand dollars right now, the way it's proposed, and spend it on whatever hydrola they need to spend it on up in Mecklenburg County or Warren or whatever.
And you know, one of the things that I want to do as committee, and I know the whole board want to do is include the staff, you know, I don't want to revisit this thing over here, you know, I want to put this thing to a rest, am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
And so, you know, that's one of the things I want this committee to do, is just, feel I really put this thing to rest. So, anyway, anything else on that? Anything else Attorney Lawrence, you want to say about that? Did I carry the motion?
I think you carried the motion back to committee.
Okay, all right, okay, you can move to your next item.
I'm going to defer until a closed session to talk about a couple of other things, actually several things at this point that we'll discuss as quickly as we can, but that's all I have for you in that session.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, on the other business.
Did I, I don't, I can't remember now where I am. Okay, I'm not going, I'm, I need to back up. Let me tell you about a meeting we had last Thursday night.
All right.
It's been a weekend. So Thursday night, we met, and thank you, Ms., you're still with us, that's what you want to talk.
She's the mad pro town for me, Ms. Face.
So we had the pleasure of meeting with the Littleton Town Council, Town Commissioners, in a, in a special call meeting with the town of Littleton about their request to discuss with the county the possible acquisition and taking over the, the operation of the town's water and sewer system. I don't need any action from you today, what I will say, it was a very informative meeting, we got a lot of information, but the next step in that process, is Mr. Williams still here? He is, but don't pay attention to Chris because he has a very aggressive program of what he's like to do. But the next step in that process would be, in my opinion, a memorandum of understanding between the county and the town to actually allow the county to engage in a thorough due diligence process to learn as much as we can about the town's water and sewer system. All of that needs to happen before we start having discussions about just even deciding that we're going to do it. So the first thing I'm going to request from you is that you authorize county. that happened a couple of years ago with the town of Bethel and the Greenblee Utilities Commission, um, where the, uh, GUC essentially, after several years of working through it, took over the, um, the, the town's water and sewer system. Uh, so we've been looking at that, um, we're probably gonna use that as, as a go-by for now, but the next step would be for us to put together this MOU. So, I wanted to make that report to you, and, and if I can just have a motion to proceed with an, an MOU with the county and the town for due diligence purposes only, um, I'd like that motion. If, if you don't pass that motion, then that tells me you're not interested at all. Uh, if you do pass the motion, it just tells me you want to know more.
Okay, with that being said, any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time if that's your pleasure.
So move.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Reddick, is that our second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barrett. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay?
I'm pretty sure anything else I've got I need to discuss in court of session.
Okay, very good. All right. Now, with that being said, we'll move to other business. Um, there's a letter, I'm not gonna read it, celebrating Melody J. Bolton's ninety-eighth birthday, which is, was a great celebration, and Madam Clerk drafted this letter, just needed to make it retro, she's already have it in her possession, they picked it up from the office, I'm assuming, right? Okay. All right, can I get a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Reddick, is that our second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Okay. All right, now, um, Commissioners, I just wanna remind you all of, um, staff spends a lot of time doing the weekly memos each week, Ms. Denton, Ms. Wells, um, Mr. Thomas over there, Assistant County Manager, you know, they do, they spend a lot of time putting this together, and we really need to take time to really look at it. There's some pertinent information in there a lot of times, and, um, you know, I was, y'all know who I was this past week, and I was trying to look at it on my, on my phone, and, uh, again, it was a challenge to me, but I was able to still, to read it. But, but do take time to do that, because they spend a lot of time doing that. Okay. All right, anything else on the other business from the manager, attorney, or the commissioners?
You can add a proclamation.
Right, okay. Um, let me, let me do this, and then I'll come to you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, let's see, pass that around. Do you have enough to go on that side?
We have hours.
Okay, all right. Um, Commissioner Reddick, I'll go through this, I'll, I'll recognize you. And, you know, and I'm, I'm really not going to read this unless you all want me to. This is a proclamation of support of the Sons of American Revolution and observance of the adoption of Halifax Resolves. And I know Commissioners, uh, Webb and Davis are familiar with this, we do this every year, um, been doing it for a long time, ever since I've been a commissioner. But on Halifax Day, uh, the, you know, myself along with the manager and you have been invited to the event that they had been at ten o'clock that morning. And the manager is on the program to bring the rooms from Halifax County, and they want me to read this proclamation, and, and it's been done every year in recognition of Halifax Resolves. So, that, that's in the just what it is without me having to, to read all of it, unless you want me to. And I need to motion to that effect if you're okay with it. So, move. Motion made by, why, why y'all laughing at me? I'm wrong, wasn't it?
Did you say George Green was out?
Motion made by Commissioner Silver's our second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye. I oppose. Okay. Um, now, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes, just a few minutes. Uh, well, we had a lot of discussion about, of course, recreation, um, today, and I learned a lot, and the things I picked up was that there's really no, I guess you'd say, that the western part of the county is not served, and going through the, the park and recreation plan, the comprehensive park and recreation plan, it talks about many parks, neighborhood parks, and community parks, then identifies those places that are municipalities that have those parks. The Hollister slash Iato slash Essex area, that area's not incorporated, so, so they're not municipalities, so they don't have the ability to even create a park. My concern is that, I know we gotta take a baby step, all right? And, and I wanna make sure, I would like at least take a baby step, and, and that baby step would be, could we look at putting a neighborhood park approximately three to ten acres in the western part of the county? Now, I'm not talking about something that gotta be managed daily, I'm talking about a, a walk-in track, or maybe a picnic shelter, baseball field, other areas have started that way, I think Red Oak started that way, and it doesn't require a lot of money to start, to start it. I, I would like for us to at least take a look at that, and also, my next, I guess my question for the county manager there, when we have ARPA funds, do we have ARPA funds still available?
Um, so, two parts to your question.
Yes.
Um, first one is, we actually have a meeting set up with Ms. Wanda Rod, who had emailed all of you and me, and to talk about an area, I'm not sure where it is at this point, in the western part of the county.
Okay.
That meeting, I believe, is set up for next week, and I'll be hearing some staff, so we can talk about that. So, we, we do have that in the works to have, if nothing else, a piece of property identified for, for an option to possibly purchase.
Option.
Um, the second part is the ARPA funds, when you look to your capital reserve report, the majority of those ARPA funds have been put into capital reserve.
Okay.
And you saw everything listed.
Yes.
Um, the only money that wasn't placed in capital reserve was the funding that was allocated for broadband.
Right.
And we have, we had about two million set aside for matches. Um, let me look at Christina really quick. We haven't used a ton of that two million for the matches, so we have some of that available that I believe we can still move, Mr. Lawrence. There's a lot of rules that are tied to ARPA. Um, but getting back to capital reserve, most of that was put in the capital reserve for the projects that you saw. Um, most of it went for public utilities.
Yes.
For infrastructure, like, over half of it did.
Most definitely.
Um, but there is a little bit left in the broadband, and when we, I'm not sure how far we're gonna get, and, and then for us to find out how much we may actually spend, we'll have that funding possibly left, and as you all know, our hands are tied.
Right.
For a lot of things broadband, so we're in the middle of our great grants, we have a meeting where, we've been asked us up a meeting regarding CAB, which is completing access to broadband. Um, and then there's a third piece of it, this is all driven by the state.
Understood.
Um, but we can, we could need to look at, see how much we've spent or committed at this point for broadband, and that would be some of your funding that's left that we may be able to redirect if the board would like.
So, I guess my, my, my next question is that, I guess to the board, I mean, could we act on something like that now? I mean, it's not, it's not a big project, and we're not talking about hiring a director, we're not talking about staff, okay? We're just talking about taking a baby step towards this regulation that we've been talking about for so, so, so long, a baby step.
And it, it depends on how this meeting goes, and we may be able to bring back some information to you, and then you wanna be careful about the property because if the property owner finds out that we're looking at the price.
Right, exactly. Yeah, understood.
So, we might be able to have something for you in the next month or so, depending on how these conversations play out next week. And in the meantime, I know y'all been on broadband, and we are too, but we are bound to a certain extent.
Exactly.
By what we can do with the funds.
That's right.
So, we can talk about that internally, see what realistically we may spend, and then bring you back a report to show you what you could have if you would like to redirect those funds.
Well, I'll, I'll make, oh, you can do it.
You go ahead, sir.
I, I said it early, and I think, I was just kinda scratching up some numbers here pretty quickly. How would you, Mr. Brown, I don't wanna get to, I don't, I don't wanna start, you know, we gotta be careful how we, you know, throw money around, but we can actually round down some of those reserve funds we have. If you just round those down to the, to the next hundred thousand, you can generate about almost three hundred thousand dollars worth of money. We could create a new reserve fund for parks and recreation, and all you really do is just round it down, then you're going from one point one eighty, one million, one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars to one point one million. And you take that eighty-seven thousand, move it over to your, your new parks and recreation reserve fund. I mean, that's an idea of where we can create some, some capital without...
Oh, he's not listening.
Without, without digging too deep a hole, you know, somewhere.
I think, I think you can, as long as you, you adhere to what the, the restrictions are for a capital reserve fund, to include possibly purchasing property.
Yes, I mean, it would have to be for exactly what he said, purchasing property, putting in infrastructure.
Yeah.
I think that's the way we might could get started with some money without having to dig ourselves a hole somewhere.
Just so we're not, just so I'm not, so I'm not confused. We don't have any more money, any more ARPA money for broadband. We went ahead, we're already obligated to do ARPA projects, okay? Anything else that wasn't obligated, we went ahead and obligated it to, what do you call it? The, the thing that you used ARPA money to pay previous salaries, something?
Revenue replacement.
Revenue replacement. We, we got the rest of it, we had to, we had to obligate it by December thirty-first. So, everything else that was left that we were gonna spend on broadband, we, we moved it to revenue replacement, so that money is now back in the general fund. It's not been put in capital reserve, it might still be available for whatever else you want to do with it, but we had, if we didn't have a broadband project already obligated by December thirty-first, we had to, we had to leave broadband.
But we have those funds sitting there, in the general fund.
The fund, yes.
Yes, that's what they need.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Reddick?
And it's, uh, instead of a baby step, I think we need to take a meaningful step. The recreation, comprehensive parks and recreation plan that was published on January twentieth two thousand fifteen begins, uh, section five, strategies for meeting countywide needs by stating currently there is no countywide program for parks and recreation services in Halifax County. County residents are having their recreation needs met through a combination of public and private providers. Unfortunately, without a countywide agency in place, many recreational needs are likely not being met. I previously talked about some of these needs that are not being met, including many of our young people in the western part of the county who have no daily meaningful recreational opportunities. Uh, I also wanted to highlight that, uh, in addition to no programs, we don't have a leader such as a director to seek funding, we don't have a leader such as a director to ensure that every resident, no matter their town, has access to state enriching recreational opportunities. And some of these opportunities include that a director could coordinate, um, arts and crafts, senior aerobics, after-school programs, walking trails, summer camps, courts such as basketball courts, tennis courts, and other types of courts, or not only leagues, but also for students, uh, after school to practice, five K races. Uh, we have a picture here of trail races, so these are, are some of the opportunities that, uh, a, a countywide recreation director could, could advocate for and implement. The last one I wanna make is that we continue to create these plans, but then we don't implement them, and we're going to potentially watch another generation of kids from all over the county, from Runup Rapids to Hobgood to Scotlandek, Enfield, Hollister, Littleton, and so on, grow up without, uh, comprehensive recreation. And we have, again, our schools, we have 4H, we have community organizations that are providing some recreation, but it's not comprehensive, it's not a plan that is implemented on a daily basis. When the summer camps are over with 4H, where, where would those kids have recreation? When school is over, uh, in, in May and June, where would those kids have recreation? When our children are sitting at home looking at their cellphones the majority of the day, where would they say, instead of looking at YouTube and Instagram and Twitter, where can I go outside and play? And that's why we need a leader such as a recreation director to have a staff in place, a, um, a center in place that can, can provide this, this leadership. And we can take baby steps by voting in favor of a director today who can then take the baby steps to implement this process, instead of us taking baby steps and saying, oh, let's put a park here, or let's put an initiative here, or let's support this here, and then we look up and it's ten, twenty years from now, and we're still taking baby steps, instead of us being leaders and leading by putting in place a director who can develop us a comprehensive plan and program, uh, to, to implement recreation all throughout the county.
You finished?
Ma'am.
I would like to make a motion at some point.
Okay, all right, let's hear from Commissioner Davis.
I think we're all in agreement today that we want to focus on recreation and improvement across the county. Um, I'm a member of the community that has been brought up several times today. However, I do feel, I've seen what happens when we jump too big or, or make, um, say we're gonna do this, but we really hadn't taken a, a time to plan the steps involved in it. And so, I agree, I guess if you wanna do, I agree with the baby step method. We've already put in place, um, we've hired someone through the 4H and other, um, different agencies working together, that her duty is to, um, look at increasing the recreation across the county. Um, I just think we should give her time to sort of lay out what we need to do, and what is encompass of that.
May I respond?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The 4H camp is a youth development initiative. If you think about recreation, we're talking about, we, we are a majority aging population in our county. If we think about the majority of our citizens, they also need recreation, and they're not going to necessarily get it through 4H, youth development. That's why we need a director who, who creates programming, like aerobics for elderly people, arts and crafts for middle-aged people, collaborative, uh, program, youth program programming and recreational programming, where you bring the elderly and the aging population together with young people to do activities together.
Okay, let's hear from Commissioner Reddick.
I, I'm listening to everybody's, um, position, basically. I'm at a point, I said earlier, that option one, according to that plan, was to hire a recreation director staff. Here's where I'm at. Can't we at least let, allow the county manager to let us know what would be the job description of a recreation director? Let us know what would be the salary? Let us know whether or not that person has the ability to write grants? Let us know, can that person operate in the beginning with only maybe a secretary? The minimum. And if possible, where can that person be staff, or office be staff? And that way, we can come back next time, she can have figures, and we can look at the figures to see whether amount we can do, I don't wanna just do it and don't know what the figures... Let us know, can that person operate in the beginning with only maybe a secretary? The minimum. And if possible, where can that person be staffed, or office be staffed? And that way, we can come back next time, she can have figures, and we can look at the figures to see whether amount we can do. I don't want to just do it and don't know what the figures are, but at least look at the figures and say, okay, we can do this, or we can't do that. And then we're in budget time now, and we can at least look at it.
Well, you know, my thinking is this, you know, and of course, you know, you all can make motions, and, you know, we'll have to act whatever the majority say, but my thinking is this, I think what we need to do is let the county manager and her staff meet with Ms. Webb and see what Ms. Webb has to offer. I mean, we got to meet back on the twenty-first of this month, and now, Ms. Denton may be in a position to report back to us then, you know, how that meeting went, et cetera, and maybe even move some of the things that we talked about today, but I think we need to give her and her staff a chance to meet with Ms. Webb first, and then come back to us probably more later than the first meeting in May, you know, with some, you know, with some information, at least from the meet with Ms. Webb, and maybe even how they would recommend that we move forward. Let me tell you all something, you know, I just really thank y'all, I mean, you know, the 4H person has been identified as a temporary recreation person, I mean, you know, happening in that regard, and that's, you know, that's a baby step. But we need to just look at that and see how that works out, you know? And if it doesn't work, then we probably need to revisit it. And, but I think at this point, not even just what I just said, well, you know what I just said, because she was hired for that purpose too, because that's what she's going to be doing going forward, but I think for this moment, for this second, and I know it's five minutes to three, we got to go into closed session, we need to probably just let Ms. Denton and her staff meet with Ms. Webb and kind of see what happens from there. That's my thinking.
I'd like to make a motion if it's proper.
Wait a minute, hold, Thomas, do one of y'all want to make a motion first? Because I think, didn't you say you want to make a motion?
I did.
Okay, do you still want to make that motion, or are you going?
I want to make it.
Okay, go ahead. And then I'll come back to you, depending on what that motion is and what happens, because I know you mentioned it both.
I move that the board authorize within its budget the creation of a full-time recreation director position and the establishment of a Halifax County Recreation Department. This includes the development of a job description, identification of funding sources, and initiation of a strategic plan to expand recreational programming facilities and equitable access throughout Halifax County.
Okay. All right, motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, in a further discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, so that's dead. Now, the next thing that I still say at this point, did you want to make another motion?
Yes, I'm going to make another motion.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion that our county manager create a job description for the Director of Recreation, including a secretary in any office location.
Okay.
And to come back with the salaries of each.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Did you second? Second by Commissioner Webb, and in a further discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passed, forty-two. And I guess as far as the timeframe, Ms. Denton, you'll have to, I know that'll be a little bit of HR to come up with that.
Yes, what we'll do is have HR put together some position descriptions
Fine.
For these potential positions, and what we will need to do is assign them a grade, which will be a range of a salary.
Okay.
That's how you hire within the counties, within a range. And I would, this wasn't in your motion, but I would probably do this anyways, maybe develop a basic operating budget.
Okay.
In addition to the location.
Sounds good, yep, thank you.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else on the other business? If not, well, I can't show you which right now, we're at, what you do. We need a motion to go into closed session for...
Chairman, Chairman.
Yes.
I have something to say, this is quick, I'm just going to walk and leave.
Is this about, okay, come on, come on. And look, like here again, we normally don't do this, but I'm going to give you a minute, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you all so very much, County Commissioners, Halifax County Commissioners, with voting to begin the MOU process
Okay.
With the town of Littleton, in hopes, in hopes that we can come to a final decision of Halifax County Utilities, assuming Littleton's water and sewer department. Again, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Faison. All right, at this time, we're going to go into closed session to turn around.
I have two reasons to preserve the attorney's plan, privilege on a couple of matters, and then on another matter to get instruction from the board concerning a process that would involve the acquisition of real property and other capital asset.
Okay, anything for you, and you say you don't have anything. Okay, based on that, can I get a motion to do that?
So moved.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Silver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, in a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't know what he said.